Good morning and welcome to the Clatsop County Conference of Plan Update Joint Planning Commission Countywide Citizen Advisory Committee. Today is April 26th, it is 9:02 a.m. and I'll call this meeting to order. My name's Andy Davis. I'm a member of the Countywide Citizen Advisory Committee. I live in Astoria. We'll start out the meeting with just going around the room for introductions. And I'll try to read off of my participant list. I hope it stays relatively static order so I can keep track of everyone, but if I miss someone, please excuse me and just let me know. Raise your hand or your voice. Gail, could we start with you?
Yeah, good morning. Gail Hendrickson, Community Development Director.
Thank you, Gail. Jan Mitchell?
Jan Mitchell, I live in Astoria, I guess I'm the vice chair of this, of the Citizens Committee.
Thank you, Jan. John Orr?
Yes, John Orr, Astoria Planning Commissioner since 2018.
Thank you, John. Clark Powers?
Yeah, Clark Powers, Warren, Oregon, new planning commissioner.
Thank you, Clark. Cheryl Johnson?
Cheryl Johnson, a member of the Countywide Citizen Advisory and I was the representative from Northeast Citizen Advisory.
Great, thank you, Cheryl. Charles Dice?
Yeah, Charles Dice, a member of the Southwest Coastal Citizens Advisory Committee and a member of the Countywide.
Thank you, Charles. Jim Allegria?
I'm Jim Allegria, I'm a Citizens Advisory Committee member and from Astoria.
Thank you, Jim. I think I saw Nadia bounce up there for a second. Nadia?
Nadia Gardner, Chair of the Clatsop County Planning Commission, live in southwest in Arch Cape.
Thank you, Nadia. Pat Corcoran?
Pat Corcoran, I live in Astoria and I'm a member of the Countywide Citizen Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Pat. How about Chris Farrar?
I serve on the County Planning Commission. I live in Astoria.
Thank you, Chris. Susannah Gladwin?
Hi, I'm Susannah Gladwin. I represent the Southeast LC Jewel Vine Maple and Elderberry Seaside Rural on the Countywide Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Susannah. I think, so I've got some staff members and Lisa Phipps, can you introduce yourself as well?
Sure, Lisa Phipps. I'm the Coastal Policy Specialist for the Department of Land Conservation and Development.
Thank you, Lisa. Thanks for joining us. David Cook?
Morning, everybody. I'm David Cook. I'm a planner with Clatsop County Community Development.
Thanks, David. Julia Decker?
Good morning. Julia Decker, Planning Manager, Clatsop County Community Development. I'm not presenting today, I'm just checking in with you.
Thanks for joining us, Julia. Ian Sisson? Okay, Ian said in chat that he's not got a mic connected this morning. He's just observing. Did I miss anyone in that? Okay, hearing none, I think we can move on. Thank you all for taking a moment for introductions. A second welcome to newer members and thank you staff for joining us and listening in. We'll open the floor to public comment and input at this time. If there is anyone from the public who would like to make a comment for our proceedings today or for the general Conference of Plan proceedings, you're welcome to make one. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to the committee today?
Yeah, Andy, Lisa Phipps has her hand up.
Sure, thank you, Gail. Lisa?
Hi, Andy. I just want to take a second because I'm not going to be able to stand for the whole meeting today. I just wanted to let you know that Gail has been forwarding chapters to us. Some are getting faster than others and I very much apologize for that. I'm trying to trying to ride people so that you can get what you need. But we should start seeing some more pieces coming through. So I just want to let you know that it is on our radar, just trying to work through some workload issues with some of the other reviewers.
Okay, thank you for that background, Lisa, and thanks for letting us know before you had to drop off. Anyone else from the public have public comment at this time?
So Chair Gardner has a question. She has her hand raised.
Thank you. Um, yeah, sorry, I'm Andy. Um, yeah, I just had a question for Lisa since she's here and she's leaving. Just thinking about the wetlands approaches, the standard versus the safe harbor approaches and, you know, you have experience, I think, with other communities around these questions. And I'm wondering if, if it does happen that municipalities, whether it be city or county governments, adopt like kind of a safe harbor approach at first and then over time, you know, kind of further refine it using the standard approach in areas of particular concern. Is that something that you see?
It's not, but it's sensible. Most folks kind of get bogged down in that discussion and feel like it's an either or. And it, it can be a hybrid. And adopting safe harbor, knowing that it may or may not go through, you know, the standard process, you know, protects you. At the same time, it will provide you with that flexibility as you move forward. You're probably gonna, unless you write in some policies, which you can do. You can acknowledge some policies within the amendment that would allow you to not have to come back and necessarily do any updates to your comp plan. Just depending on how, how you craft your policies, but it is, it's a very sensible approach to me.
Thank you. Yeah, I think our policies right now are kind of broad, like we should adopt something. But then the other part of today is making recommendations to the county commission and staff on how to proceed. And there are of course pros and cons to either approach, but it feels like maybe, you know, making sure it gets done is the top priority. And then, you know, it'll take a lot of time to do the standard approach, so maybe doing it in a way that, you know, is sensitive to different communities' needs was seeming to make sense to me. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Nadia. Thanks, Lisa. So hopefully I've, I've adjusted the gallery and everything so I can see everyone. So hopefully I won't miss hands. I will say I can read the document a little less well at this point, so if I miss something on the screen, let me know. But any, any other public comment at this time? Okay, let's go ahead then to the bulk of our agenda, which is the review of Goals 19 and 5. Gail, are you presenting on 19?
That's gonna be David Cook.
Okay, David, welcome. Thanks for coming to present.
Thanks for having me. Yeah, like I introduced earlier, my name's David Cook, planner with Clatsop County Community Development. I am working on the Goal 19 Ocean Resources Countywide Goal Update. Ocean Resources was established back in, the original one was established back in 2012 to conserve marine resources and ecological functions for the purpose of providing long-term ecological, economic, and social value and benefits to future generations. That's kind of all spelled out at the top of your agenda packet. This is draft number two. We did take draft number one to the Board of Commissioners back in January and they had a few comments. We also had some comments from Andy Lanyer with DLCD, who oversees the ocean resources goal for the state. So we've incorporated some of the commissioners and Andy's comments into draft two. We prepared draft two back in the March 15th meeting with the Joint PCCAC, but it was continued until now. So hopefully everybody's had a chance to review it and otherwise I will kick it back to you, Andrew.
Sure, thank you, David. Are there questions or comments from the group at the outset before we sort of get into the into Goal 19? I assume that's, that'll be a first motion when we get into it, Nadia?
Yeah, and if I can say, Nadia, I do have a list of comments that we received from you ahead of the March meeting, which I can share with the group and then Commissioner Farrar, I also have your comments that you prepared for us before this meeting, which I can show on the screen to share with the group if you guys want to reference them.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, that first one is really just, I think, more of a typo sort of situation where Andy Lanyer had, had noted that Clatsop County doesn't have jurisdiction over the territorial sea. So it's just the first sentence says it does, so I just was reminding him. So I don't, I don't think that that needs to be a motion because it is just a, yeah.
Let me just check, is there any objection to accepting that as a scurrainer's change? So we've got a change from Clatsop County's territorial sea to Oregon's territorial sea off Clatsop County. Any objection to that change? Okay, great. So let's, let's go ahead then. They, I don't, David or are you or Gail presenting? Just so I know who's got the helm here?
I'm presenting.
Okay, David, thank you for bringing up the, the front piece of the goal. Any comments from the group on, on this section? Let's start with overview and then there is the historical and current conditions and future conditions to review too, but any comments for the overview section? Nadia?
I just wanted to note, so this is, um, David and for the, you know, information for the group, this is my area of expertise right now. So I'm, I'm working in ocean conservation science and so I want to thank staff for the work they did. I think it's a real step up from the last. I have a few kind of additions just to, you know, because there have been some big changes over the last 25 years and so. But I want to honor all the new work that's been put into it.
Okay, thank you, Nadia. Other comments from the group on, on this overview section? Jim? And then I see Chris too.
Yes, on, last, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, sir.
The last sentence in that first paragraph, I'm not really sure why it's there when it begins with Camp Riley Safety Zone. Is there a rationale for keeping that?
The rationale when we drafted this was simply that it was, it was included in the original Goal 19 and it seemed, it seemed wise to include it in here just to differentiate our jurisdiction versus Camp Riley's jurisdiction and national, at the national level.
I mean, yeah, okay, it doesn't do any harm, but it doesn't make sense to me, but that's okay. We can, we can let it, let it go.
Thank you, Jim. Chris had a hand up and then I saw Pat do.
Yeah, this kind of relates a little bit to what Jim was just mentioning. I found that there's several different agencies and with different jurisdictions, different missions, different goals, different purposes for being involved in this Goal 19. And in general, it's fairly well explained in the overview or later sections as they come up. But it just seems like for somebody that isn't well-versed in these various agencies or organizations, it's often difficult to keep track of them all and understand how they interrelate. And my suggestion that I did email to the Community Development Department, which I had hoped they would actually mail out to the group so you could look at my comments, but that wasn't done. I suggested that they might consider putting a small table in this overview section that lists the agencies and organizations and what their role is in Goal 19. It would really clarify it to people that look at this document later on. It's just a thought, a suggestion to make it more understandable to the general public and also to the Planning Commission, which probably was confused at times as well. Thank you.
David or, or, well, David, do you have feedback on that notion of including some sort of jurisdiction clarification chart?
Sure, yeah. If you guys would like a chart or a table that shows the various jurisdictions that have some kind of say or stake in ocean resources, I think that's certainly something that could be added.
Is that satisfactory to the rest of the group? Okay, and Chris, does that work for you?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Pat, you had a, you had a hand up briefly. I want to recognize you if you still have comments.
Thank you. Just briefly, I think that's a great idea, what we just said and to Jim's point. Historically, there's been some tensions between Clatsop Plains and the Camp Riley Round Noise and other kind of things. And that looks like a sort of a preemptive explanation that, for example, no Clatsop County can't create a sound ordinance that would make it not be rifle range anymore. I think that, that specific point is from that. I like the idea of the list of, of stakeholders.
Okay, thank you, Pat. So I did see a couple of hands. I also want to recognize Nadia's been adding things into the chat, so if folks can keep track of that too. Let's start with Nadia and then I saw Jim's hand up as well. So I'll get back to you, Jim. But Nadia?
Yeah, I just have two sections I'd like to add to page three. Um, so the first I had put in my original letter for the last meeting and the second is new. So two new things that happened since the last comp plan was the addition of five marine reserves off Oregon's coast and one of them is in Clatsop County. So this one that could just be, it's in the chat and you can also just paste it as, I'd like to make a motion that we add two sections, Oregon Marine Reserves and Oregon Beach Monitoring Program and to the current conditions section. And I, yeah, I have, I have them in the chat and then the first one is in this document that you have up here, David. Thank you. So in the Marine Reserves, Cape Falcon Marine Reserve is in southwest Clatsop County. And then also we have this beach monitoring program, which is kind of misnamed in that it's, it's actually nearshore ocean water quality testing. And so we have it in areas with high ocean recreation, which is, you know, mostly seaside, Cannon Beach, Arch Cape, you know, Oz West areas. And there are regular violations, regular advisories submitted or produced during the summer on that. Showing that we have offshore pollution originating from sewage.
Okay, so, so Nadia has made a motion to add two sections or to recommend adding two sections here. I'll take them initially as a group of, of two motions. That's the way she made it. I will advise the group that if anyone would prefer, we consider them individually. You can just make a motion for us to do that and if the group would like to consider them individually, we'll do it. That's, that direction.
Yeah, and, and just so that you know, this language all comes directly from the agencies. So this is the from, or, so the first is from Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and the second is from Oregon Health Authority.
Okay, thanks, Nadia. Let, let me check before reading them off. Is there a second for the motion as they appear in chat? Jan, thank you. So I've got a motion in a second. Let's, let's start with discussion on these two. I can do a full reading in a second. Well, preference of the group, would you like me to do a full reading now? Are you happy reading them in chat? I'll certainly do a full reading before we do, we go to a vote. I'm not hearing a request for that necessarily, so.
Can you, can you read them out loud, please?
Sure, happy to. Okay, so, so the first one, so both of these are presumably added. I'm presuming here that we're adding them both in the same section, which is beginning on page three. The first section to add is titled Oregon Marine Reserves. The narrative for that section would read, Oregon's five marine reserve sites are areas in the ocean dedicated to conservation and scientific research. In the marine reserves, all ocean development and removal of marine life is prohibited. In associated marine protected areas, ocean development is prohibited, but other limitations vary by site. Management and scientific monitoring of the sites is overseen by the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. The northernmost site, Cape Falcon Marine Reserve, is in southwest Clatsop County off Falcon Cove Beach and Oswald State Park. So that is the first section, the Oregon Marine Reserves section. And then we've got a second section to consider as well, which is titled Oregon Beach Monitoring Program. The narrative reads, "The Oregon Beach Monitoring Program of the Oregon Health Authority monitors the waters along ocean Oregon's coastline for the presence of fecal bacteria and reports elevated levels to the public. Marine waters are tested for Enterococcus, am I pronouncing that right? Which is an indicator of the presence of other bacteria. Enterococcus is present in human and animal waste and can enter marine waters from a variety of sources such as streams and creeks, stormwater runoff, animal and seabird waste, failing septic systems, sewage treatment plant spills, or boating waste. When levels exceed state thresholds, beach advisory notices are released cautioning the public. Such advisories periodically occur nearshore off ocean off of Clatsop County. I think that's of, especially in summer months."
Oh. I just have a typo there. So such advisory periodically occur in nearshore ocean, in the nearshore ocean off of Clatsop County. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Nadia. And for my clarification and understanding here, when the first section, especially the Oregon Marine Reserves section, mentions things like prohibitions, that's a reference to existing state law? Is that correct?
Yes, state law.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's open this for discussion. Is there a discussion on, on either of these two sections? Changes, recommendations, objections, et cetera? Chris?
Well, I like both of them and I think they'd be appropriate to include, they just provide a little more information.
Okay. Pat?
And I think because it is the language from the agency, I think we're safer by just using all of those words rather than trying to wordsmith it ourselves.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Pat. Any other feedback before we go to a vote on this? Okay, so we've got, I don't, I'm not seeing more feedback, so we'll try for a vote. I didn't hear objections in the discussion period, so I'll just ask. Is there any objection to accepting these two section additions? Is there any objection to that from the group? Okay, so I'm not hearing it or seeing any objection at this time, so I think we can take that as a passed motion to add or to recommend adding these two sections. Thank you, Nadia. And Jim, I had a hand up from you a bit earlier.
I, yes, I did, but I'm going to withdraw that, so I have no comment at this time.
Jim? Okay, any other, and obviously we've sort of moved down into the historic perspective, current conditions section via those two motions or single motion, two sections. So I guess we can certainly open to discussion in these sections as well. David, I did have one sort of process question here. A little bit further down, there is, I, I was just trying to understand the provenance of, of these different highlighted comments. There's a couple of sections that have different color coding. One especially is about House Bill 3114. And I wondered, is there meaning attached to that being a different color than the, than the rest of it?
No, I, I think that was a leftover from a staff comment. Comment I had made, so it's only read because it has a comment attached to it, just discussing it internally.
Okay, thank, thank you. As feedback, and I don't know if this is true for this particular bill, I, I thought this when I was reading this this morning. I very much appreciate, say in the highlighted section that you noted what year that passed. When things are just labeled as a, as a bill to also attach the year to it, so like in the impacts on offshore energy facilities just above. If you could even parenthetically note what year that, that was passed. It's not always a conflict, but occasionally it comes up. Okay. I do see another comment from Nadia. So unless there's other discussion from the group, I'll go to that one. Nadia, I'll recognize you.
Thank you, Chair Davis. It's important for us all to recognize that pollution in the ocean comes from people on land. So on page five, the last paragraph of the narrative says, "While Clatsop County already protects the sea from undue pollution." Well, we're certainly not New York City or Pittsburgh, but we definitely do pollute the ocean, so it's important to me that we recognize that. Um, so I, my motion is that we replace um, the first sentence with, while Clatsop County already protects, oh, sorry, with 80%. Actually, I'm gonna admit, "An estimated 80% of marine pollution comes from land. Land-based pollution includes garbage, sewage, livestock, manure, sediments, automotive oil, and tire debris, pesticides and other chemicals. In addition to locally-based pollution, global pollution also poses significant threats," unquote. And then they could, you could, you can continue with that discussion of the garbage patch. That's my motion.
So that's to replace the first sentence? Is that correct?
Yes.
To understand with an estimated, that you're starting with an estimated 80%?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so we've got a motion to amend the language in the last paragraph of the, I think that's future conditions is our right section.
Second.
And thank you, Charles. And I'll, I'll reread that language just to make sure we've got it clean for the motion, but so it's to replace the first sentence of the last paragraph, which starts, "While Clatsop County already protects." To replace that sentence with, "An estimated 80% of marine pollution comes from land. Land-based pollution includes," I think includes should be plural or "includes garbage, sewage, livestock, manure, sediments, automotive oil, and tire debris, pesticides and other chemicals. In addition to locally-based pollution, global pollution also poses significant threats." And then the rest of the paragraph would be ma- maintained. Okay, so we've got a, that as a motion and a second, I will just to open discussion because I see a staff comment in the chat. Nadia, do you have, do you happen to have a, is that sourceable on the 80%?
You know, that's why I added the unestimated because I think when you look around in the internet, 80% is what it says. So if, if staff feels less comfortable with using a number, then you could say the vast majority, if that's, if that is something that makes the staff more comfortable about accuracy.
Look, let's continue with discussion at the, with the 80% mark. If someone wants to amend that language, I think we can certainly take that as on board to amend it. Okay, discussion on, on the language amendment proposal. Chart or Clark, excuse me?
Yeah, Commissioner Nadia, the sentence that starts land-based pollution includes gar- is everything here sourced as in a citation you're quoting from? Or is this just wording being proposed?
Yeah, this one is, you know, this one is not from an agency. This is me thinking about what are the most likely pollution sources for us here in Clatsop County? We do have like regular violations, for example, by some of the fish processing plants in Warrington. And but I think, you know, just kind of day-to-day, this is, these are some of the, you know, most likely ones that, that I- Um, but I think, you know, just kind of day to day, this is, these are some of the, you know, most likely ones that that I selected. I mean, you know, if you're in Pittsburgh, it's factory, you know, stuff, so, so um. Uh, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Thanks.
Thank you, Nadia, thank Clark, um, any other discussion on this proposal? Pat is, are you wanting to amend language there? Uh, just, Susanna, just one second, uh, I've got a comment that just came up from Pat in chat, and then then I'll come to you, okay? Um, Pat, what was that uh a language amendment that you're suggesting there?
Yes, it could be, uh, yes, it could be, that was the uh, the idea. I like Nadia's proposal and change that first sentence for sure. I think also the, I think it's enough to say the majority comes from non-point sources, and I think the listing is good reminder of of kind of the things we do every day. But make it less the eighty percent and less specific.
Okay, so that was, that was to replace the an estimated eighty percent uh front piece of the of the motion, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, uh, so I've got a motion to amend here, uh, which is to replace the an estimated eighty percent. Uh, of, I think of. Yeah, um, with the the language, the majority of pollution comes from non-point sources such as. Uh.
I just, uh, Chair Davis, um, so there's the first sentence, eighty percent of marine pollution comes from land, that is more like a global. Thing, and then the second sentence is, I guess, more, you know. More about Clatsop County, so I think generally globally, I guess we could say globally, the vast majority of marine pollution comes from land. And then I would say like what Pat said, um, in Clatsop County, the majority of pollution comes from non-point solutions. Uh, uh, sources such as, and those are those less garbage, sewage, livestock, manure. Does that make sense? And and do I, do I amend that? Let me know.
So, uh, so. So in this case, I, so Pat has suggested language, so this is sort of his amendment to make. Uh, I'm, I may be misunderstanding actually where it fits in in this section. I don't know that really honestly, I don't know that we got a second yet, so we can probably shift this around while we're uh still in that status.
That's fine, if some, I I wasn't looking at Nadia's uh first phrase, I was just focusing on uh that particular point. So I'm well open to to phrasing that sentence uh in a different way, just with that more general uh reference.
Okay, and then we we also have some staff comment coming in, but Chris?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted a little clarification on that. I agree that citing a specific percentage, even though it's a a greater than rather than a equals. I I think it's better to just say something qualitative, like it's very large, or it is the largest, or. The ve- the vast majority, those kinds of things are fine, but I would recommend not citing a specific number. But what the clarification I was wanting was then. It 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 seems there's two sentences, one is related to the global situation and the other then homestown. To Clatsop County, am I getting that correct? Because I'd like that uh. Sort of restated and and gone over again by, I guess, Nadia, to to make it clear to me. If they're two different um. Geographical areas of uh discussion there. Thank you.
Did you catch that question, Nadia?
Um, well, I was trying to just retype it here into the chat, I know uh Commissioner Farrar isn't a big fan of the chat, but um I'll read what I'm saying, I'll try to say. Globally, the vast majority of marine pollution comes from land. In Clatsop County, the majority of pollution comes from non-point sources such as garbage, sewage, livestock, manure, sediments, et cetera.
Okay, um, let me ask, Pat, does that incorporate your idea sufficiently as far as non-point uh sources?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And and Chris, does that answer your question as well?
Yes, it does, and I second the uh motion for the amendment.
Okay, uh, so I'll take this, uh, Nadia as a, at this point, a motion from you uh to amend, and then we go a second from Chris. Uh, so we're just replacing some of the early language in Nadia's uh first motion. Uh, with with this language, uh, reading globally, the vast majority of marine pollution comes from land. In Clatsop County, the majority of pollution comes from non-point sources such as, and then continues the list as before. Okay, let, so let's, let's just have discussion, so this is, right now, we're just talking about replacing the original motion with this one. Uh, is there a discussion on that replacement? So that's really discussion about the first um sentence and a half here. And uh, let me just say for the record that Lam Kwong has joined us, thank you, Lam, nice to you. Any discussion on this change? Uh, Nadia, thanks for for quickly incorporating the language, Pat, thanks for the suggestion, Susanna.
I'm not sure if I'm, uh, if it fits in right here, but I think it does. Is the pharmaceuticals. Uh, contamination of, I think it's mostly sewage, an issue that should be brought up? That should be included.
Gail, Gail, is this is your motion, do you have comments on that?
Really a question.
Or, excuse me, Nadia, since it's your motion, not you.
Um, uh, I appreciate that comment, pharmaceuticals certainly are a big issue, especially in our rivers, because of the solution to pollution is dilution. Um, the ocean, it's not as big of a health impact for humans, but um. I think by saying such as, it's a, it's not an exhaustive list, and we included sewage here, so I would suggest that we just stick with this. And know in our minds that that's also an issue, um, especially for our rivers.
Good, thank you, Nadia. Does that answer your question, Susanna?
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, um. Well, let's, let's check, and again, this is, I'm doing a vote here just to see if um. If this language replacement uh to go back to the full motion is sufficient for folks. Uh, so again, this is just an amendment to replace the first sentence and a half. With globally, the vast majority of marine uh pollution comes from land. In Clatsop County, the majority of pollution comes from non-point sources such as dot, 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 uh, the rest of the list. Is there any objection to that amended language? Okay, hearing no objection to that amendment, uh, let's, so now we would. Pass that amendment, we're back to the main motion, which is just to add this whole section. Uh, starting now with the globally, the vast majority of marine pollution. This is to replace the first sentence in the last paragraph of future conditions. Uh, so let's go back to discussion of this full. Motion, full uh listing. I I want to recognize that we've got some staff commentary. Staff, does the current language uh address sufficiently? Um, the things that you were listening from from Noah, et cetera. Gail, or I know Ian is not on mic, but um, Gail, does this seem sufficient to you?
I I think it's general enough to work, I know Ian had also posted a link that actually had the eighty percent in there. Uh, from from Noah, uh, it says eighty percent of pollution to the marine environment comes from the land, so I think either way, we're, we're okay.
Okay, thank you, and I apologize, I'm not tracking um. Information accessible by links at the moment. But thank you for for giving us that info, okay? So any further discussion on this? Language replacement amendment, um, so again, this is just to replace this first sentence, Chris?
Well, this is related and maybe a little off the wall, but I'll just say. When we get into citing specific numbers and values and things, I I believe that it's a good idea to show a reference, right? At the end of that sentence, it contains it, so somebody can go back and check it, that's what it's done in a scientific publication. I know this isn't a scientific publication, but that might be a rule of thumb to follow is to to let somebody go back to the source. And when it's a general statement, and you would find it, looking at all kinds of references related to the topic, uh, then I don't think a reference is needed.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chris. Any other comments or discussion at this time? Okay, uh, let's check again here, uh, so we've got a motion uh to replace in the last paragraph of future conditions to replace the first sentence. That sentence starts with while Clatsop County already protects. To replace that sentence with the passage. Globally, the vast majority of marine pollution comes from land in Clatsop County. The majority of pollution comes from non-point sources such as garbage, sewage, livestock, manure, sediments, automotive oil, entire debris. Pesticide, pesticides, excuse me, and other chemicals. In addition to locally based pollution, global pollution also poses significant threats. Well, you just check, is there any objection to the change of replacing that first sentence with the passage I read? Okay, hearing no objections. The motion passes, uh, thank you for the suggestion, Nadia, and for the language crafting, Pat and others. Um, okay, uh, let me just return it to the floor, are there any other changes uh for any of the? Front material for goal nineteen? I see a hand from Chris.
Yes, I submitted a few. Comments on the uh section entitled future conditions. And I'm not going to go through each one of them, some of them were very minor editorial suggestions, clarifications, but um. In the paragraph, the second paragraph of future conditions that's titled uh impacts on fisheries. There's a dollar amount of one hundred and thirty-seven million dollars per year in primary sales. Uh, given, and it was unclear to me whether that was for uh the entire Oregon coastal community. Fish Hall or Fisheries Hall, or whether that's Clatsop County, and also. To what year does that apply? I think those two pieces of information with that statistic are. Important to include, and and you may not have that at your fingertips this time, at this point. But I'm asking that we consider um. Agreeing as a committee that those items should be. Uh, referenced there with the one hundred and thirty-seven million dollar number. So that's number one on my list.
Uh, David, can you? Can you address that in any way, uh, just as as commentary here as we as we consider it?
Sure, yeah, so the the, this is all a quote taken from uh Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. Um, so their their reference didn't have, or I should say, this quote doesn't have a specific year attached to it. But I imagine if we did a little research um on their site, or perhaps contacted them directly, we could get a year that this is um in reference for.
Okay, thank you, David, Chris?
Actually, there was quite a lengthy discussion, and I kind of kicked myself for not having uh written a few figures down, but at the last um. Board of Commissioners meeting. Um, it was either a workshop or a work session or a a committee meeting, a a board meeting. They had a person from OSU of Fisheries, uh. Person there that went in depth into the Clatsop County, importance of fishery to Clatsop County. And so you might look back at that that meeting, it was just last week, I think, maybe uh. Uh, Director Henrikson can provide uh. Some details to my memory on the.
Yeah, I have the, I downloaded their PowerPoint and their documents, I can send those out to everyone, including staff.
So, so Chris, let me, let me try to prod for a a sense of of what your desire is here. Is your preference that we clarify the quote as presented, or that we have information specific to Clatsop County listed here? Or both?
Well, you could do both, but but I think it would be great to actually make it specific to Clatsop County. It gets a little bit muddled when you start bringing in other geographic areas, but I know it's complicated because. Uh, landings here in our county come from other parts of the coast and and. You know, our people go to other places and and they make money there, so it is muddled, but maybe get something a little more Clatsop. Uh, specific and with a a date on it, which will probably be uh. Twenty twenty-one at this point, I think the presenter at that meeting I spoke of was using data from twenty twenty-one, but maybe twenty twenty. But that'll make it, you know, more time resilient, I think, to get it as soon as.
I've I've got a couple of hands, I'll I'll recognize Pat and then Nadia.
Oh, thank you, Andy, I I think I, I'd like to be consistent with this one and maybe uh go general. And rather than have a specific member for a specific time for such long-term comp plan update, kind of like the pollution example. The seafood industry is a significant contributor to Clatsop County's economy. You know, kind of a bump it up to the general about making the point that, you know, fishing is a big uh driver in the county. But as soon as we put one data point for one year, especially with something like fishing, I think it's um unnecessarily specific. Uh, and the broader point, I think, importance of fishing to the economy.
But Nadia?
I agree with um, Pat, uh, the. Uh, it it would be, I think, almost impossible to figure out what the Clatsop County share is, number one, because the boats are coming from Chinook and Garibaldi and other places too. And they're in Clatsop County harvesting, but then go home to Tillamook County or even to Washington, and so. Um, I definitely wouldn't agree with trying to dig out those numbers. And um, but to me, you know, kind of, one thing that's really interesting for me is also the share of different fisheries. And I I don't want burden staff with that, but the group might be interested to know that almost all of that money is the Dungeness crab fishery. It's like over a hundred million dollars currently of that, and so the other fisheries are are, you know, significantly less valued. And so that, you know, that that's just a a data point, um, you know, about, you know. Which of these fisheries are the most valuable and the most economic driver, the biggest economic drivers in our area? So, um, but I agree with uh Pat, let's like, especially if we don't know when that's from, like, let's just say, you know. You you could either say specifically, you could give an example, like, it's very valuable, and for example, in, you know, twenty twenty-one, it was this, but um. It does fluctuate quite a bit year to year, and you know, this document will be out of out of date next year if you stick with one number.
Thank you, Nadia, um, I want to, Jan, I do see your hand, I want to recognize Gail, Gail, you put a comment in chat, I just want to. Have you say it, uh, and maybe clarify if you can, uh, for the folks that aren't following chat so close.
Yeah, so um, in terms of the specific impact of fisheries in Clatsop County, that will really be addressed in detail in goal nine, which is economic development. Um, you know, maybe a general passing in in goal nineteen is appropriate, but really the specifics about the impacts, whether, what, what types of harvesting are going on? What the specifics are per per fishery and everything else that would be covered in goal nine.
Thank you, Gail, and then Jan.
Well, I, we have experts here, and I am not one, but I would just uh. Encourage an elaboration of um Nadia's comments that. This is a document supposed to last for at least the next ten years or so, and the more we can generalize the. Um, and not not uh get so specific. Get so specific that it's outdated within three years, the better. So you, you're talking in a generalized context rather than specific years.
Okay, thank you, Jan. So we've got, we've had some, um, differing comments here. I want to circle back to Chris. So Chris, your, your initial comment was about. Um, and as recorded by David here, uh, was about revising. And clarifying, uh, about Clatsop County and maybe clarifying the year for this quote. Uh, we've had some other comments. I'm curious, has anyone changed your mind on this? Do we want further discussion about this point, et cetera? Chris?
Well, I think we discussed it. More than we really probably should have, but, uh. I do feel that. Putting a number like one hundred and thirty seven million dollars without saying. What year it was when this document may be reviewed for. Five or 10 years or maybe even 20 years, if the past is any. Guide on that, uh, it, it seems like a useless number to have in there without saying. For what year that applied. I'm not saying that that number's going to remain the same year after year. But then say, for example, in such and such a year, the haul was this much. If you just put the number there, nobody knows what the heck that means really. But that's me. I'm in a grumpy mood, so go on with whatever.
Well, so, so if we get a year citation, if David can, uh, track down a year citation. Uh, and then if we. Could we add some generalized comment, both to refer people to goal nine if they want more information about? Um, fishery impacts. Is that sufficient for, for group need here?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Clark. Oh, you're muted.
Sorry, I, yeah, uh, I think you've already said it, but. How about we just re- remove that last sentence and just refer to, uh, the readers to gold mine for more economic, financial impacts? Cause we've been talking about this for fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
So, so I think, uh, I would re- refer that, uh, decision anyway to the group about whether they want to, to recommend. Takes taking away this last sentence. I, I will say that. I'm, my reading of, of this section, uh, and the inclusion of that has a lot to do with the interaction of. Uh, these ecosystems with the economy here, which is not necessarily the focus of, of goal nine, that goal nine is. More about the, the economic, uh, focus exclusively, and this is about that interaction. So. I don't know. I got a particular value out of that quote, but I may just be me. Um, Gail, I see your hand up there.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So the quote, um, is actually from a press release of July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, from ODFW and it is talking about ocean acidification. The only thing that the press relief says is that, uh, it talks about the, um. The fisheries that we have listed in our report. And all it says is together, these fisheries are valued at a hundred and thirty-seven million per year. Which tells me that it's not a Clatsop County number. Uh, we can certainly. Either take that number out or we can update it with the information from, uh, GLADEX, which was what was presented to the board. At their last regular meeting or their last work session a week or two ago. And we do have specific information for Clatsop County. So it's really what whichever you would prefer as the committee.
Okay, thanks, Gail. Um, I'm gonna see Cheryl and then Chris.
I'm in favor of leaving in, uh, these economic references, although. We can either clarify or delete the hundred and thirty-seven million specific. Um, what we're talking about are very precious resources. Um, that need to be preserved and protected. And one of the reasons that we value these resources. Is, is economic value to our community. So I, I would not like to see that economic value stripped out.
Good. Thanks, Cheryl. Chris?
All this, uh, I, I agree with Cheryl, except I would say that. The dollar value. Is not what we're after. It's a measure of the value of that resource, not the other way around. Anyway, I, I think, uh, I have a general question. Or, or a comment that kind of would probably be something maybe, uh. Director Henrikson could comment on, and that is the idea that throughout. The comp plan. In places such as we're discussing right now. Is it appropriate or wouldn't it be appropriate to often cite? Another goal section that more specifically gives greater detail around that. Particular point of discussion. I think it's very helpful to cross-reference these goals and. Most people aren't going to realize that. That's the way this document's set up. And so if you could direct them back to a more complete discussion. Around the economics of fisheries. In goal nine, that I think would be a very helpful thing and it could be a similar. Uh, uh, way of writing the document and referencing the document throughout. So I would be in favor of generalizing there. And also letting staff choose something from that very detailed report that was given in a work session, I believe. Uh, just a week or two ago, and I recommend. All the people in this meeting. Actually, take a look at what was said at that meeting. It was very informative.
Sure, Davis. I just, I want to note that, um, uh, Charles Dice had. Put in a note that he wanted to say something.
All right. So he and, he and Chris both, uh, both sort of raised their hands at the same time. I'm going to go back to Charles. I think it was. A separate, I, I think he was wanting to make a separate motion. Charles, is that correct? And you're still muted, Charles, if you are there. But that, but that comment preceded our discussion on this one by quite a bit. Okay, um. Well, let me just pull the group. Are. Are we happy? So David has recorded some recommendations from, uh, generally from this conversation in the comment sidebar there. Um, are we generally happy as a group? Uh, I'll say, uh, my, my desire here is sort of to move on and to allow staff to craft something appropriate for this section, given our commentary. Is that something that the group is comfortable and happy with? Okay, uh, so, so let me go back to the floor, um, and, and I'll try Charles again here. For other comments on the conditions section. Uh, Charles, I do see your, uh, comment in chat. Uh, do you want to make your comment at this time? And again, um. Maybe there, you're muted. Okay, we can come back to Charles. I'm going to put something in chat briefly, but, um. Any, anyone else have comments for this section before we go to policies? Okay, uh, hearing none. Uh, David, I think we could advance the screen anyway to policies. And let's, uh, let's just see if there are any, uh, points of feedback from the group on the objectives and policy section. I am going to briefly mute myself here, um, just so I can type without, uh, you all hearing it completely. Um, I'll. Recognize, uh, the motion from Nadia. Nadia, I'll take that opportunity to go on mute, but Nadia, you have a motion in chat for policy J.
Yeah, I have three proposed policy additions, um, policy JK and L. My first is, um. The addition, I move that we had, we add policy J, Clatsop County shall coordinate with the state. To assure compliance with Oregon's single-use plastic bag ban.
I'll second that. If that's what we're doing.
Uh. Thank you, Nadia. So, uh, we've got a motion and a second to add a policy J, Clatsop County shall coordinate with the state. To assure compliance with Oregon's single-use plastic bag ban. Um. Thank you for the second. Chris, uh, is there discussion on this proposed policy J? Pat?
Well, I mean, it seems appropriate. We just listed all of the non-point sources of, of, of things that we actually have some control over and, and. Plastic bags are high on the hazard list, uh, animals, which we also like. And so, um, yeah, I, I support this, uh, I support this notion as a specific example. Of something that we have some control over, over mitigating, and we should.
Okay, thank you, Pat. I think we should make a policy that says we like animals.
Fuzzy animals.
Um, yes, fuzzy, um, okay, uh, any other discussion on this policy J? All right, let me ask, is there any objection to adding a policy J? Clatsop County shall coordinate with the state to assure compliance with Oregon's single-use plastic bag ban. Any objection to adding that policy? Okay, hearing no objection. I think that one passes. Nadia, do you have another one teed up? You said you had a couple more.
Yes, my second one is policy K now in the chat. Um, I move that we. Add policy K, Clatsop County should explore ways to reduce plastic pollution on land in waterways and the ocean.
Okay, uh, so we've got. A motion. Is there a second for that policy K motion?
I second.
Okay, got a motion and a second, uh, for a policy K. Reading Clatsop County should explore ways to reduce plastic pollution on land in waterways and the ocean. Okay, um, any discussion on that policy? Not seeing hands or anything, so is there any objection to that policy K? Okay, I'm not hearing objection. So I think without objection, that passes as well. Thank you, Nadia. Uh, I, I do want to, before we go to L, I do want to recognize, I think Charles is back. Uh, Charles, I know you had a comment, uh, that you put in chat. That you had a comment earlier. Uh, I'll recognize you now.
Yes, yes, I did. Uh, I. Wanted to raise an issue. That I didn't see covered anywhere. And maybe it's not that issue, um, but it seems like it's a concern. And that is acoustic pollution. I, I don't remember seeing anything about acoustic pollution, but. You know, if you're talking about the, the marine nearshore and whale migrations, things like that, you know. Hopefully someone is thinking about. Acoustic pollution, especially when it comes. To new. Or potential sources of energy, um, like, you know, wave. Uh, uh, energy generation or windmills or that kind of thing. So I just wanted to see what the group thought about that. Thanks.
Charles, just for, for clarity, I, I know that. You initially had put, uh, put your hand up sort of, um, when we were still in the. Future conditions sort of section. Or is your interest having narrative about this issue or about, or, or to have a policy about this issue?
I, I think, yeah, it, I raised my hand when we read the narrative section because I, I felt that might be a good place to address it. I don't have any kind of emotion. To, to be specific about, because, you know, I don't know that much about the acoustic part, but. I know it certainly has been a concern, especially for mammals, and I figured. Nadia could probably weigh in and. Say if that's something we ought to include in this, or it's not something we need to worry about. Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. Um, so I'll bounce this back to the group and Nadia, I see you've just come off mute, but, uh, any comments from the group on addressing acoustic pollution? Nadia?
I think it's something we should certainly be concerned about, but that Clatsop County has no jurisdiction over. And, um, so. You know, I could imagine some things that happen in the ocean off Camp Rylea and other military work offshore. Um, and also just kind of ship. Traffic can have both ship strike and sound impacts on especially marine mammals. But I, you know, I, I just, because of jurisdictional issues, I don't know that it's important to include it in the comp plan. Maybe staff has ideas about that. If that's come up in your work before.
David or Gail, do, do. Do you have feedback for that question from Nadia?
Yeah, we've not had it, uh, come up in our work before. And we want to, we would want to tie it to land use related issues. So if there's a specific land use that we have jurisdiction over, uh, in the county that is impacting acoustic. Pollution in the ocean, then this would be the place to include it, but I'm not sure what that would be.
Okay, thank you, Gail. Uh, Chris?
Well, I kind of. Take the middle ground here. I, I see the, I understand the point that, uh. The Director Henrikson just made, uh, that we don't have jurisdiction, but I do feel under current conditions that. The, uh. The acoustic pollution is a large enough problem that. I, I think it would make. The document seem. Um, more forward-looking and comprehensive and. Well researched, if we at least include a couple sentence paragraph. That this. Is a fact that acoustic pollution does impact. Uh, nearshore environments and further out in the ocean in negative ways for. A resource that we consider so important. Anyway, there's nothing we can do about it, but at least acknowledge that it's there.
Um, so. Chris's, uh, comment there and then Nadia seems to have maybe supported that in chat. Uh, is to at least address acoustic pollution in the narrative section, it sounds like. Is that, is that something that fits with the, with the group? Um. Charles, uh, do you perhaps have feedback on that or anyone else from the group have feedback on adding? Uh, a paragraph or a couple sentences, uh, within the narrative section to address at least. Acoustic pollution is something we should be thinking about. Um. I'll ask Charles and then I saw John, John, Pat, um, so Charles?
Yeah, so, so no, that would be fine. Um, and, and kind of to, to Gail's point is. I understand we don't have jurisdiction over many, many things. Um, but it, it kind of what prompted my comment is that, that later on, we, we do talk about things like, uh, I think, energy, uh, production. Um. Offshore in Clatsop County that, that the energy would come onshore, uh, and those sources of energy. You know, could, could create, uh, acoustic pollution. Um. So that's kind of what prompted me to, to make the, the comment and, and express the concern. And, and I'm happy just to have it covered in. You know, the narrative section, uh, under future conditions with a sentence or two. That'd be great. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Charles. John, and then Pat. John?
Yes, um. I think it is worth, notwithstanding the jurisdictional concerns, it is worth noting. Uh, that it would be a policy of Clatsop County and that would have value. Uh, were there to be some sort of dispute or. Federal policy discussions or environmental impact analysis. For a proposed project to know that the county has weighed in on this and expressed a concern. For the, uh. The marine life, uh, marine habitat, which are already covered. Um. In, you know, the, uh. The, the federal law. Uh, that's, that appears in this, in the packet here. And so I, I think it would be a good idea to have that, uh. Language that, uh, we express our concern that, uh, projects. Uh, undertaken by private parties or governmental entities not. Um. Adversely affect. Uh. The, uh. The aquatic life or the, the. You know, the sea creatures in our territorial waters.
John, can I ask for clarification there? Uh, I'm. I think that I'm hearing that your preference would actually be to include a. your preference would actually be to include a policy addressing this. Is that a correct interpretation of what you just said?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I would I would more than invite you to add policy language, even what you you sort of just noodled through there to the chat, and then we could consider it as a motion in just a second here.
Okay.
And then I've got Pat and then Nadia.
I concur with Chris and John and the generals of having it there as a placeholder. Mitigation is probably going to come from outside and from federal and other kind of things. I think having the articulation for Clatsop County being supportive, that is great. As far as a policy, I would only want to go as far as that acknowledging that the county looks forward to working with whoever has the authority on that.
Thanks, Pat. Nadia?
I started writing a narrative and it got a little crazy. So are are we in a place? So I would like to just, I would move to empower staff to use, I I just drop block, dropped in the chat a a NOAA website all about this. And so staff could just take that NOAA website and pull out, you know, five sentences. And so it's discussed in the narrative. So can I make that motion to empower staff to to insert a section of the narrative focused on noise pollution? And
I second.
Okay.
Sure. So so we've got a, we've got a motion in a second to empower staff to include in the narrative section a statement about noise, ocean noise pollution. And and Nadia has provided some citation from NOAA to that to that end within the chat. Is there any discussion on that for more than what we've already had? Pat?
Just is that okay with staff?
David, does that seem sufficient direction for you? Does that seem like an okay thing to do?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion from the group on on the motion? And this is just for the narrative at the moment. Susanna?
I'm just curious because I know the Seattle and the Puget Sound, they have really worked. And I don't know who was all at the table to, I think it was the slowing down of the ships really helped. And I don't know if it was animal man, marine mammal strikes or and the noise pollution, but I think that should be looked into. We don't have quite the physical conditions of the Puget Sound. I don't know, but we do have marine mammals up through the Columbia River. Just not the killer whales, I don't think. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Susanna. Okay. So let me, let's just ask, is there any objection from the group to this motion to empower staff to add a section, a narrative section about ocean noise based on the citation from Noah? Any objection from the group toward adding that section? Okay, seeing no objection. Thank you, Nadia, for the suggestion. John, again, if if you have policy language you would like to insert, please bring that forward. Happy to consider that, too. I do want to note that we have a motion for a policy or we have a policy L that Nadia has entered in the chat as well. It's a little further up at the at the moment. But I want to consider that before it slips off our off our radar or sonar, as it were. So policy L, Clatsop County shall consider impacts to the ocean in land use decision-making to reduce all types of land-based pollution. So Nadia, do you want to speak to that policy L motion?
I don't need to speak to it. It speaks for itself. Thank you.
Okay, and and do we have a second for that policy L?
I second.
Okay, Clark, thank you. So we've got a motion in a second for policy L. I'll read that again. Clatsop County shall consider impacts to the ocean in land use decision-making to reduce all types of land-based pollution. I think land-based is hyphenated to for what's worth the scriveners, but okay, any discussion on this policy L?
Is the idea, Nadia, to broaden from plastics to everything, or is this separate?
Yes, it's just an acknowledgement that everything we do on land impacts our rivers and ocean. And so an example of this might be the changing of the short-term rental rules that better clarifies the septic capacity of of homes as aligned with the amount of people that are allowed to rent. So in Falcon Cove, it has been discussed that potentially they were over capacity. And so now, you know, they're limiting the amount of people in a house to the septic capacity. So we think about that as a just a practical human thing, but really is in a place like Falcon Cove, that's an ocean thing. And so I'm I'm just trying to get us to start thinking more deeply about what our land decisions mean, not just to us as humans and as a and the land and even the creeks, but also our ocean, which is 70% of our planet and our life is based on.
And I and I agree with the notion. I was just hoping that it wasn't abstracted from something specific and doable like plastic bags to kind of all garbage and in fact, kind of diluting the point, but I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, and transportation might also be another way. So when we're thinking about, you know, expanding roads or things like that, like, you know, what does that mean in terms of of pollution coming off of those roads for land, rivers and ocean? And industry? If we get there, when we get there.
Okay. Thanks, Nadia. Thanks, Pat. Any other discussion on this policy L? Okay, I'm not seeing more discussion on it. I'll read it one more time. So we've got a motion to include a policy L. Clatsop County shall consider impacts to the ocean in land use decision-making to reduce all types of land-based pollution. Is there any objection to adding that policy L? Jim, is that an objection?
Uh, no, we're going to skip over discussions or will that be after?
Sorry, I thought Pat. Pat had led off discussion, but if you have a discussion point, let's let's hear it. Let's go for it.
Yeah, the the question that I have is because the term shall consider, does this mean that it obligates the county to have at least one sentence and anything that they do so that they can say that they did consider the impact to the ocean and land use decisions? So that would be really a question for the planning staff. How would you interpret? I guess this is a generic question for the planning staff. How would you interpret this on a decision-making to decision-making perspective?
Gail or David, do you have feedback on that?
Yeah, it's pretty broad, and I think it's open to a lot of interpretation depending upon staff who's interpreting it. I don't know, I'm assuming this applies to all of the unincorporated areas. So something that happens out at Fishhawk Lake or Jewel or any of those areas would also, we would have to consider that. Considerate is a very general term. I mean, it could be as simple as, well, we thought about it. Yeah, there might be impacts. Okay. So we've considered it. So I don't know what this policy really wants to get down to in the nitty-gritty in terms of when we get to an implementation stage, aside from banning short-term rentals and prohibiting road construction in Arch Cape, but it would help. I I just don't know what you what you all want to get out of it other than you want staff to think about stuff.
Yeah, my 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 only concern would be obligating staff to document their considerations instead of just having an oral conversation. If it's ever challenged, what proof do you have that you did consider it? Because of the term shall, if that, if you don't think that's an issue, then, you know, I honestly, I think it's rather an innocuous policy.
I would have a concern. So if if you're going to ask staff to document it, what is the level of documentation? Are we going to be hiring consultants to do in-depth studies for every addition to a single-family home that comes in in Birkenfeld area up by Fishhawk Lake to document what the potential impacts are to ocean? I mean, there there should be some some something. I mean, it's either going to be something, you're either going to be really general, like you just were in your discussion in the narrative, or you're going to have to be really hyper-specific. But again, I'm not sure what it is that you want us to do. So if we consider it, so what? So, yeah, does that make sense? I mean, you're not telling us what to do. You're saying, think about it. Okay, we thought about it. Here's what we thought about it. But now what? Okay, and we don't have jurisdiction or the knowledge or the money to hire consultants for every single development or require, I guess we could require everybody who applies to, you know, hire their own ocean consultant to figure out what the impacts are going to be. I know, but other, again, I want to, I'm trying to figure out what it is exactly, other than banning short-term rentals and prohibiting road construction in Arch Cape. What is it that you exactly want staff to do or you want the county to do?
Well, I I see your hand up. I, my my inclination here is to recognize Nadia's because I think maybe she can speak to the intent of the policy. But I do want to come back to you in just a second. Okay. Nadia, do you want to address at least what Gail or Jim is bringing up? And then I'll go along.
Ye- yes. Director Henrickson, I feel really uncomfortable with what you just said to me about my intentions. I um, were was just giving two examples of things that the county could do to think about ocean pollution and it in no way was speaking about banning short-term rentals or building Arch Cape roads. And I'm not sure why you would bring it to that place. In fact, in terms of short-term rentals, I'm complimentary about the operation standards that are proposed that will help perhaps solve a pollution problem around short-term rentals. And so, and my intention, like, I think a lot of our policies, these are sweeping policies, which kind of guide later what rules and regulations we might adopt as a county. And none of them are like, you must do this specifically. And this one is that same thing. And if it makes staff more comfortable, and we could change shall to should, but again, like, as as you noted, Director Henrickson, and the, it's just considering. So like, something that happens in a place that's not on a river that connects to the ocean, you wouldn't have to do anything, you know. So but if it's something that we already have, we already know, we have, for example, Arch Cape, Cannon Beach and Seaside all dump sewage periodically into onto their beaches and into their ocean and into their creeks in a way that results in those beach advisories that we discussed previously. So we know that's already an issue. There is, you know, is something that the county is considering going to worsen that. Okay, well, then then we think more deeply about it. But if it's not been a big issue and we don't feel like it's going to have an impact, then, you know, I, to me, it'd be cursory, but it it's just, I think, you know, just generally in life, humans ignore the ocean. And because we're an ocean edge county, it's particularly important that we not not ignore it for a variety of reasons, including economic development because of tourism as well as human health. If you don't care about wildlife and other things. But so my intention is just to to get it on our radar that that what we do individually and as an entity and in our day-to-day life affects affects the ocean. And so if we're all doing that, even in a little bit, then we might make a positive difference in it, and it it matters. So if, but if staff, if it worries them, I'm happy to change shall to should.
Thank you, Nadia. Long? Oh, you're muted, sir.
Okay, you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, well, I think that clear cuts have a huge impact on pollution of streams and ocean. And I don't see anything that really addressed to it. I don't know if this policy that that we just, I don't, I guess we haven't voted on it, has any saying about clear cut, clear cut pollutions? Do we need a policy separately to deal with that? Or yeah, I guess that's that's my thought.
Thank you for the question, Long. Susanna, and then I see Pat.
I was thinking that under, hold on a second, um, under consider that if a project came up for the county to rule on that if an entity wanted to bring up an issue that it could pollute the oceans and our waterways that the county, it would add more weight to public comment on that specific issue. And so I think it's important. I think right now county staff has been very good about all this. But the Planning Commission has changed over the years. Some of them have been very good and some have been somewhat indifferent. So I think it's important to have shall consider. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Susanna. So I've got, I've got Pat and then Gail and then Jim.
I like what Nadia said in her language and kind of describing her motion. That sounds like it would be great narrative for the beginning, not a policy, but a statement of fact about being a ocean-adjacent county and having, you know, additional responsibilities for that. Um, and as far as Long, I I hear you, and I've heard you on that before, and I keep coming back to that. You know, 85% of our land bases in the forestry, land use classification and everything, including the clear cuts, is part of the Forest Practices Act that we nobody in Clatsop County has the ability to unilaterally change. Yeah, so it's amazing when you look around, you keep seeing, you know, we all keep seeing those, and it's so much of the county is governed by, the practices are governed by outside policies.
Okay, thank you, Pat. And then Gail?
Yes, I'd just like to ask if Lisa Phipps is still available. If she could perhaps give us some guidance and some parameters about what would be appropriate to include in Goal 19 and what may be outside the scope of Goal 19?
Um, I am available. Hopefully, I've been tracking this conversation well. Um, so so Goal 19 is a really interesting goal in that most of it lies outside of the county's purview. It really applies to the the territorial sea, which is not within the county's regulatory jurisdiction. But at the same time, you you all are correct that there are definite land-seed links. You are taking it to places that I have not seen it go. That doesn't make it right or wrong. It means that really you guys are the first ones opening it up to really dive into it and see what it can be for Clatsop County. I feel that, I'm just curious, and so just humor me for a second. I'm just curious if there are other goals like under Goal Six or other goals where we can bring up the same concerns around non-point source, et cetera, that 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 might have a little bit more direct connection to what you can have authorities over. So if you're comfortable, whenever, if you, if you can keep an open mind and you get to where you're comfortable with this document, I would like to take it if that's, if it's okay with the group, we can take it to our person who covers Goal Nineteen. That is his sole job to, to make sure that it's at least in line with the statewide policies. Of course, everything in here is consistent in that. Oh, wait, what do I want to say here? I don't think that the ideas are wrong. I, I, I just wonder if there's a better place for them for you as a jurisdiction. So if, if that's okay with the group, I, and you get to a place where you're comfortable with me doing that, I, I would, I would suggest that that might help get you to a place where you are comfortable either moving forward or taking things out or making sure they get caught, some captured somewhere else. Well, there's, I mean, there's, that's, there's Curry, Kuz, Lane, all of these have ocean front. We've got seven counties on the ocean front that all have to deal with Goal Nineteen. So you guys are the first ones tearing it apart, which is awesome, but we want to make sure that you're actually doing things that you can follow through on.
Lisa, can, and I, I do see a bunch of hands. I've got a list that I'm constructing of people that have expressed interest in talking, but Lisa, can I ask you a clarifying question here or, or maybe just get your thoughts on something? So you suggested that adding language to other goals might be appropriate to get at the same objective. And you suggested the Goal Six, air, 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 what is the?
Yes.
Air, water and land.
Water and land.
Right. One of the things I'm curious about is, so we've talked about a few different things here, some to do with housing, forestry, transportation, et cetera. Would we? Would we want to replicate language in all of those goals or would we be better off just putting language in Goal Nineteen to say one thing?
That, that is the question. And, and the policies themselves, you know, are neither here nor there. It's, are they appropriate here? Or there? So that, that, that's the question. So I saw Nadia's comment about, you know, and there's, there's certainly, certainly something to be said for duplication sounds negative, but I'm not using it in a negative way for, for duplication so that you're emphasizing the importance. So including it in other goals and then pulling it into Goal Nineteen. And so another way to look at it is, that might be possible, is that say, for example, it's determined that the feeling is on a DLCD side that this is a little bit of an overreach. The, another way to get at it and it's still included in Goal Nineteen, so there's that that, that kind of, the visual, in terms of words on paper, there's that visual connection to the ocean, to the land, is you could do it in introductory paragraphs, right? So you, so, so, so you can take all this and your commitment about it and acknowledge in there if this, and I have no idea how this is going to play out, but then acknowledge in there that it might be connected to other goals that you can then reference. So that's another, that's another way to maybe look at it. I just, I just don't know if it's an overreach and I don't want you guys to feel super great about it and then we tell you, no, 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 and then now you've spent two hours talking about it and it makes me, it would make me terribly sad. So that's, that's my thoughts on that.
Thank you, Lisa. So I've got a, I've got a little list here. Jim, you're the first one on my list.
Okay, what, what I'd like to propose is, is I, I understand and actually support when Nadia's original proposal. But my big concern is what I stated before of an obligation. When you used the term shall, I could see a lawsuit and somebody will say prove to the court that you considered it. So my, my proposal is changing shall to should. I like Lisa's comment about making a similar, even maybe a similar statement and, and another goal that's, that may be more appropriate, but I think it's good to have something here. And then including, and Patrick mentioned this, including in the overview, some statement about the connection between the land and the ocean. So that, that's, I don't know if you want to, that's not quite in a, in a form of of a, of a motion, but that's essentially, I think it'd be a way that we could move forward, but also meet the, the goal, the intent of, I think, we all would support.
So, so Jim, let me, let me make sure I understand if possible. So I've got both a language change here on the policy from shall, should. That's one element that I picked up here. And then, and separately, in addition to the narrative, to address this notion of interactions between land use and ocean pollution in some way.
And yeah, that would be in the overview.
Okay. So, so let me take the latter first and just A, is there any objection from the group in trying to add, and even delegating to staff to add a narrative element addressing this? Is there any, any problem from the group in, in asking for that? And, and David, do you think that that's, that's something that's reasonable to ask from staff to add a sentence or two about this interface between land use and ocean pollution?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think we can absolutely add a section in there. I'm trying to see if there's any good section we already have that would be the best place to add it, but I think we could certainly find a point to add in a few sentences about the connection between land pollutant sources and ocean pollution.
I, if I might make a recommendation there, I think the, the last paragraph that we, under future conditions that we played with a little bit already is already talking a bit about pollutants. So it seems natural enough to me to, to keep it in the same area anyway.
I'd agree.
Okay. So then let's, Jim, let's address the shall to should issue. So let's, let's treat that as a motion. We've got a motion from Jim to amend policy L. Clatsop County shall consider impacts to the ocean and land use decision-making to reduce all types of land-based pollution to change that to Clatsop County should consider. So it's a motion from Jim. Is there a second for that change to should?
Second.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. So let's go to discussion. Again, this is to change Clatsop County shall consider into Clatsop County should consider. Any discussion on that? And folks, can you put your hands down for the moment? Chris, Jan? I've got Chris, Jan and Cheryl in my queue anyway, so you don't have to worry. I'll, I'll get back to you. But if you have comments now on the distinction between shall and should, please put your hand back up or otherwise notify me. Any discussion on this item, changing from shall to should? So that's a thumbs up from Nadia. And then Pat, Pat, you have a comment?
I think it's generally fine. I mean, or Clatsop County endeavors. I mean, I'm fine with should.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Any other discussion points on the change to should? Okay, well, let me just ask then, is there any objection to the change in policy L from Clatsop County shall consider impacts to Clatsop County should consider impacts? Any objection to that change? Okay, I am not seeing or hearing objection. So I think that passes. So we're back to the main motion on this. We did have a, hands up, so I'm going to go around the, the table, as it were, to the, the folks that I had a comment coming up for. So Chris, Chris Farrar, you're the first one on my list.
Okay, I have several items I'd like to tick through. First, I'll start with being strongly supportive of the idea that Lisa Phipps put out of having their expert review our policies that we write for this Goal Nineteen as soon as possible so that we don't go off in a totally wrong-headed direction. That's impossible. Getting that feedback as early as, as possible would really be helpful, I think, and I greatly appreciate what I think was an offer to, to have their expert look it over. It's, it's pretty short, so it probably isn't too time-consuming. The second thing I'll say is on the addition of a short paragraph to discuss the relationship between land and ocean. Yeah, it could go in future conditions, but it isn't future. It's been the past. It's in the present and the future. So I think it really belongs in an overview. Just tell people that, yeah, everything's connected and here's some of the possible connections to think about and what goes on on land does affect the ocean. So I'd put it in the overview section, but that's a small point. More, more importantly, I, as I read through the policies for this goal, I found most of them out of, out of the authority of the county and I didn't quite understand, beginning with Policy A. It talks all about Oregon State's territorial sea and all that. And yeah, that's, that's part of Oregon state law, I guess. And I don't think Policy A is, is a policy at all. I think that should be included. Eliminate the word policy and the letter A there and include that little paragraph as introductory material about what might be under the objective, the one and only objective for this goal.
Yeah.
So I recommend removing Policy A and making that informational. I recommend that Policies B, C, no, B remain. Policy B would become Policy A. Policy C, D, G and H would become numbered items under a general policy that says that the county, something to the effect that the county shall engage in Oregon territorial sea plans consultation process to ensure colon, one, two, three, four, and that's Policies C, D, G and H. Because we don't have purview over any of those, but we can engage apparently in some kind of a consultation process with the state and state agencies to have our views taken into consideration. And I think that's a much better way of laying it out. And I'll wait for my final comment on policies, but I'd like the group to give me their feedback on that concept of removing Policy A entirely as a policy. And then making that change to the other four policies, making them subparts of a more broadly defined consultation kind of process for the county to follow.
So Chris, I was, I was sort of letting, letting you go on that one. In terms of, I was hoping that that was going to tie back to this Policy L that we've got a motion on the floor for. I don't, I don't know that I caught that, that 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 notion of reorganizing.
Sorry, I, I thought we finished with L. I, I'm totally sorry about that.
No, okay.
Did I just leave the meeting now?
No, we need you to come back and explain that all again to us after we finish with L. Okay. We, let's get back to that in a moment, though. Let's, there, there was a couple of things in there that were particular to L, especially about Lisa and DLCD feedback. So thank you for that comment. Let me, and just as a reminder, we do still have Policy L on, on the table right now with should consider as the language. That is the active motion. Jan, you're the next in my queue.
I just wanted to be sure that Lisa was aware that this may be our last meeting.
No, I, I was not. I'm sure I should have been. I apologize that that slipped my radar. Okay. Well.
It's not, not to say that this whole process is done, just this joint committee is not scheduled for more.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for alerting me to that.
Cheryl, I had you with a hand up.
Meanwhile, back at the ranch for Policy L. By the time we got there, Allegria addressed all of the things that I was going to. I support changing it to shall and I support putting, then putting this information in the narrative also.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl. Anyone else with discussion points on Policy L? I've gotten to the end of my list anyway, but okay, so let's have, let's go to a vote on Policy L. So again, this motion in the current language is to include a Policy L reading Clatsop County should consider impacts, should consider impacts to the ocean and land use decision-making to reduce all types of land-based pollution. Is there any objection to the inclusion of that Policy L? Okay, so not hearing any objection. Thank you all for the consideration on that. So we've had, we've had a handful of other things come up in this. So A, I want to address that, that we, we have had some feedback given to staff about including something in the narrative. David, do you feel sufficiently prepared to, to do that at this point? Do you need any other direction from us or, or feedback?
No, I think we can absolutely get a section right in here. Let me type it in.
Great. Thank you, sir. And thank you for recording things as we go along here today. So I think that the, in, in my head anyway, the next motion or thing that someone was suggesting to do at this point was from Chris. Chris, do you want to re-describe your, the spider web of redesign that, that we had in your document?
Yeah, I'll try, I'll try to do it in outline form.
Well, and I, I did see that David, I, I know I'm interrupting his typing now, but David did have, it looked like the suggestions that you had sent over. I, and that's what I interpreted that as. This document, does this capture what you're trying to describe as well? Is that accurate?
It captures it. If you have a very distracted and strange mind, it's difficult to follow, in other words, but it, my, my fundamental point on, on most of the policies, as I read them in here, and maybe I'm misunderstanding something about them. But the policies that are stated are more or less the state's policies and responsibilities. And the only way that I see the county being involved in those policies, and that's strictly true of Policy A, C, D, G and H, is, is that we can consult with them in some way if we feel impacted and feel maybe the states missed something that's very important to our own county. And so I'm for just removing Policy A as a policy and including that language as introductory that just states upfront what, what Oregon's territorial sea is all about and how we want to treat it and then move those four policies. And then move those four policies C, D, G, and H to subsections of a more general policy that says the county will interact on the Oregon's territorial C issues in a consultation process. If if something comes up where that seems appropriate. So I I don't know if other people looked at it that same way, or if somebody can correct me why I'm totally off-base on this. But I'm not going to say anymore because I've talked too much in this meeting already.
Thank you, Chris. Pat?
What I like about that is it acknowledges the limited role of the county and puts those things that we would consult within those bulleted items. What I also like about that is it does highlight the county's role, which is to engage with the state in those subsequent conversations. I mean, that, I I think that's really important, and I like the structure of what Chris put forward. I think it looks simpler when it's kind of redone on paper than trying to describe it in here.
Thank you, Pat. Jim?
No, I was going to say, it's pretty much what Patrick said, is that I do support it. I have to say, I was scratching my head when I was reading those those policies because for the same reason, is we have no control. But I I like the idea of the the subsetting these under a broader, a broader policy. And and that's it, essentially what what we've been discussing. I fully agree with.
Good. Thank you, Jim. So I I'll confess, I'm not sure how to cleanly express this as a motion. There's a fair number of moving parts here. So my preference is to to delegate a motion to reorganize these policies just to subset ones that involve us not having jurisdiction over an issue and coordinating with other agencies, departments, levels of government into to one sub, one policy instead of subpolicies. Do you think that, well, let me ask staff, David, are the comments from Chris that you've got i- in front of you sufficient as far as direction for us to to delegate reorganization to you if we make a motion and agree to to that reorganization?
Yeah, yeah, I've I've got notes taken down. And Chris's notes here are actually fairly coherent, to me at least. So I think this is, this is definitely enough to go off of.
I'm I'm sure Chris will be comforted by a fellow weird mind in the room. So thank you for that. Okay, so so I've got, let me treat this then as a motion from Chris to just reorganize some of the policies in the way expressed by his submitted document. And then we we will, we'll trust David to understand those comments and and reorganize in an appropriate way. Is is there a second for that motion from Chris?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Pat. And then is there further discussion from the group? There's been a couple folks who have, Pat and Jim, who have already expressed support for the general idea. Any other discussion from the group on this reorganization? Okay, well, let me then ask, is there any objection from the group in reorganizing in the way that Chris suggests? Okay, I'm not seeing or hearing any objection. So I think that passes, Chris, for for what it's worth. I think that's a, that's a good idea. I hope, hope that that will lend some clarity to this section about both our role and and how all these things work together. So thank you. Okay, any other feedback or suggestions for the objectives and policy section for goal nineteen? So I don't want to rush here, but let me just check then. Is the group comfortable then with closing the discussion for goal nineteen at this time? Any, Nadia?
I want to, I'm sorry, did you acknowledge Gail's comment in the chat about adding, adding policy L and other goals?
In fact, I did not. So thanks, thank you for bringing that back up to our attention. So do you want, would you like to discuss that?
Is that okay?
Sure.
I just wanted to acknowledge that, and that's a good idea. I didn't even think about going back to other goals, especially since this is our last meeting. And it, it, I guess, if I was going to include it in other sections, I might kind of, well, I mean, I guess I might broaden it and just say Clatso County shall, shall consider.
Should consider.
I'm sorry, should consider, should consider land-based pollution in land use decision-making to reduce all types, you know, or something like, rather than making it ocean-specific. I mean, I think that's a great idea, is like, just in every section that's, you know, like the wetlands or, you know, the shorelands, wetlands, I don't know, all the, you know, five, six, sixteen and seventeen, off the top of my head, which ones those are. But, you know, just to remind us that, you know, everything we do results in land use, land-based pollution for all of our waterways. That's a good idea to do. I don't know how people feel about that. I could, I could make a motion and put together some language.
Well, let's, let's see. If there's, is there any other general sentiment from the group about this notion about asking staff to to include a parallel to policy L and these other goals? And Gail, do you care? I could multitask and look up the list of goals. I don't have them accessible to memory. Which ones are five, six, sixteen, and seventeen?
Goal five is the one that we'll be looking at next. That's the open spaces, scenic areas, natural resources, and all the other fifteen other inventories that are in goal five. Goal six is air, water, and land resources quality. And then goal sixteen and seventeen, we actually won't be getting to. We are requesting budget funds in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three for consultants to update those goals along with goal eighteen. But I don't see why you couldn't make a motion to do that, to include in sixteen, which is estuarine resources and seventeen, which is coastal shorelands.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Gail. And and Gail, as far as guidance for for staff on those, is it sufficient? If if not, if Nadia or another member of the group wants to include this notion in those other ones, is it just sufficient for us to make a motion to say we would also like to include parallel language to policy L in in these four other goals?
I think that would be acceptable, yes.
Okay. And Nadia, is that the the language parallel that you're suggesting?
Yeah, I just, that's just, I just came up with right now. So Clatso County should consider impacts to our waterways. For example, rivers, lakes, wetlands, estuaries, and ocean in land use decision-making to reduce all types of land-based pollution.
Okay. And and you're intending, is the motion to include those in that policy language in five, six, sixteen, and seventeen?
Yeah.
And I second that.
Okay, Lisa, thank you for, oh, she's already gone. Lisa has left call. Thanks for joining us, Lisa. While you could. Okay, so we got a motion in a second to include this policy language in goals five, six, sixteen, and seventeen. The policy language agreed, Clatso County should consider impacts to our waterways. For example, rivers, lakes, wetlands, estuaries, ocean in land use decision-making to reduce all types of land-based pollution. We have a second for that. Can we have discussion on whether or not to advance that motion to include that language in the other four goals? Jim?
Well, actually, my my question is, Nadia, were you planning on, or you, do you intend to use that language to replace what was policy L that we had just discussed? Or or not? It's just a clarification.
That's not the motion. It could be, but I might just stick with what we have now in the ocean section and then, but if you, if if you'd like to make a motion to amend, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to make an emotion for consistency's sake to use that wording that Nadia put into the chat for, to include goal nineteen as well as the other four goes.
So Jim has made a motion to to amend the motion. And I'll just say that we would be including policy or goal nineteen in this language. And then the effect would be replacing policy L. So so Jim would be amending to include goal nineteen in this motion. Is there a second for that amendment motion by Jim?
Second.
Okay. Let me just check, is there any objection to this motion to include goal nineteen? Any objection to that? Okay, hearing no objection, so that amendment passes. So what we're back to considering then is inclusion of a policy in goals five, six, sixteen, seventeen, and nineteen that reads Clatso County should consider impacts to our waterways. For example, rivers, lakes, wetlands, estuaries, ocean in land use decision-making to reduce all types of land-based pollution. So back to discussion on that language and its inclusion in those five goals. Any other discussion from the floor? Okay, not seeing more discussion. So let me just take us to a vote then again to restate the motion. So we've got language to be included in goals five, six, sixteen, seventeen, and nineteen. And that language would read as policy, Clatso County should consider impacts to our waterways. For example, rivers, lakes, wetlands, estuaries, ocean, in land use decision-making to reduce all types of land-based pollution. Is there any objection to the inclusion of that policy in the aforementioned goals? Okay, so not hearing or seeing any objection, I think that passes. I I would just say as as note for staff, I am, as with goal nineteen, where I think this cleanly replaces policy L. I think if if there happened to be parallel policy language in the existing goals, I would take this as superseding them. If that makes sense, like, we're replacing the policy L language that we just put in. If there happens, I I I don't know that I've ever read the estuary section, if there happens to be a similar piece of language in there, I would assume that this would replace it. Okay, let me go back to the group then. Is, are there any other considerations for us before we close out goal nineteen? Okay, I'm not seeing or hearing any. Anyone want to make a motion to close up goal nineteen for the day?
I move that we conclude our discussions and deliberations on goal nineteen.
Good. Second for that?
I second.
Okay, thank you. We got a motion in a second to conclude deliberations for goal nineteen for today. Is there any objection to that motion? Okay, I'm not seeing or hearing any objection. So let's close up goal nineteen. David, thank you for steering us through that and for your help with all of that. I I do have a request in chat for a small break before we continue. Any objection from the group for taking, let's say, a five-minute break, sounds fine. Any, any problems with the five-minute break? Okay, let's, let's recess then for five minutes. We'll come back. I've got eleven oh seven now. I'll try to get us started at eleven twelve. Thank you. Okay, so we will resume this joint committee meeting after our five-minute break now. So next on our agenda, and I, I'm having interesting tech issues today. My, my PDF of our meeting doesn't want to start back up either. But Gail, are you introducing the next goal?
Yes, I am. And so I guess I have a general question for the committee members is, how would you like your presentation? There was a lot of process information that was included in the cover memo that basically spelled out how you walk through the standard process, how you walk through a safe harbor process. Do you want me to go through all of that information again and walk you through that? Or do you just want to have your discussion about safe harbor? Did you have, and and standard process, you have questions? Because, I mean, we could spend going through just the process alone. We could probably spend about two hours. So I'm just trying to gauge what level of detail you're looking for in your presentation.
Sure, thanks, Gail. So let's, let's bounce that to the group. Group, is there feedback on how much detail we would like on the introduction side here? Introducing the concepts from the memo. Jan and then Chris, maybe, Jan?
Well, I noticed, I mean, it is complex and and you keep having to go back and reread things. But I noticed that Gail was pretty direct in her one paragraph saying, there's this, these are the three things you can do. And maybe we just need to, we need to address those three action items and try to get, so we try to get through and do whatever we can that's useful.
Thank you, Jan, Chris, and then Cheryl.
I should probably know the answer to this, but I still can't quite get it clear in my head whether we have wetlands that must be protected. There's the mention in a couple places in the introductory material that the Development Department provided us with about in nineteen ninety-six, apparently, the law was, or the law has changed since nineteen ninety-six that says you don't need to do periodic reviews. And I don't know if that's for every county in the state or just a group of counties that includes Clatso. But we don't need to ever review or update what we say about wetlands, apparently. And so my question is, but we had a comprehensive plan from the early eighties and wetlands were identified. So do those have standing? And those are the ones that the county is responsible to have responsible land use practices around and ensure that they aren't degraded. Can you just go through that little bit? I, you don't have to do it right now, Director Emrickson. But if in your presentation, you could address this, this fuzzy issue that I have, I, I just can't get it straight whether we owe wetlands anything in the state's view or if that's been erased and we're just making extra work for our poor tired county commissioners.
All right, thank you. Mick, Gail, do you want to address that now? Or do you want to see if there's other questions as I go through this?
Well, let me address this now. So I think that Commissioner Farrar has pretty appropriately summarized what is happening in terms of goal five and wetlands. So because the county is no longer subject to periodic review, and that applies to to all counties. So we no longer are mandated by the state every so often to go in and review aspects of our, of our comprehensive plan. So we have our goal five wetlands, which are based on the nineteen eighty-three study that was done by Duncan Thomas, I forget, yes. Duncan Thomas, I forget, yes, but anyway, that nineteen eighty three study. And we have put protections in place, the those wetlands that were identified out of the study and. Put into goal five as significant wetlands where I believe the majority, if not all of them, have been rezoned lake and wetland. Which does provide them basically a fifty foot buffer from surrounding land uses. And it's not worded that way necessarily, because there's a fifty foot setback from that zoning line, but it is in a de facto fifty foot buffer. And then because we aren't subject to periodic review anymore, there is no obligation on the part of the county to go back ever at this point and do any work. To upgrade our wetlands inventory or address any of those issues, so.
Okay, thank you, Gail. Let's go to Cheryl and then Jan and then Jim.
But a couple of questions, one is if Gail would review for us the difference between freshwater. Wetlands and what I refer to as tidal wetlands, the beautiful study. That Crest did included wetlands that were in both categories, and so at first that confused me, so. We just, at least I need to be clear on what we are addressing in goal five and then what we will address later and. I agree with Christopher, I also have a number of fuzzy issues here, so. We probably need to to review this again, thank you for the clarification, so what we have right now is the nineteen eighty three study from Duncan Thomas. And my understanding is that protections are accorded to any wetlands identified in nineteen eighty three. And then what we now have again is this beautiful comprehensive science based. Study presented to us by Crest. But however that differs from the eighty three Duncan Thomas. Those do not have protections, I I just need clarification. On that, so I I need. I'm also fuzzy how Chris is, I need additional clarification on. What the current status is and and it you can either answer that now or possibly that will be part of your introduction overview. Thank you.
Okay, so to answer your question now, so there are three. Different goals in the comprehensive plan that will deal with wetlands. One is goal sixteen, which are estuary areas, estuarine resources, one is goal seventeen, which are coastal shorelands. And then goal five is where. The remainder of the wetlands are addressed and typically those are freshwater wetlands. So you can have different types of wetlands, but we do also have two other goals that will be primarily focused on addressing those types of wetlands. And then with regard to the nineteen eighty three Duncan Thomas and the new Crest study. We we worked with Crest because we did want to update that study, but we we first of all would need to choose. How we want to approach this, because there are more wetlands out there than just what's identified, obviously, in this. Updated study from Crest and this study has not been reviewed by the board, the study hasn't been accepted by the board, that's why you'll see it's labeled draft. So what's in place from nineteen eighty three, which was not all the wetlands in the Duncan Thomas report, they pulled out specific ones. That they included identified as being significant enough to be included as a goal five wetland. So the actual Duncan Thomas report itself includes several more wetlands that are not part of the goal five inventory. What we need to focus on today is if you want to make a recommendation. To the board as part of a policy and a comp plan that in the future they should address wetlands. Through either the standard process, the safe harbor approach or some combination thereof, that's really what we need to pin down today. Because we will not be able to work through, obviously, either one of these processes today. In terms of all the possible wetlands that would need to be protected or could be protected. So we're really here today to basically. Way the pros and cons of standard versus safe harbor approach, if you have thoughts about. Which method or which combination of methods where should be applied by the county? And then making a recommendation that in the future, you know, within the next five to ten years, give a timeframe, the county should. Blah blah blah, so really that's what we're looking at here today, it's not to. Reopen which are the appropriate wetlands and which are not and which haven't we included, it's to look at. What methods do we want to recommend to the to the board and basically some general timeframe language?
Thank you, Gail. Jan and then Jim?
Can we ask the can we recommend to the board that they adopt the report from Crest?
Well, adopting the report doesn't necessarily put these into the comp plan. So.
It's a start.
You can certainly ask that. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Jim and then Nadia?
I also, excuse me, I also have some, a couple of basic questions. One is that. Since the county is not obligated. If they so choose, this is a question, if they so choose, they could choose not to adopt any further wetlands. And consequently, any further guidelines on them would essentially be moot moot. Because they're not accepted as significant wetlands, that's question number one. Number two is that on on streams with andronomous fish. Is there any rules that the county needs to follow from federal law and regulations on those? And if so, how does that relate to? What the county? Is that something that should be considered when coming up with with the decisions for standard versus the? The 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 buffer proposal. Alternative, excuse me.
Okay, so I'm not sure if I completely understood the second part of your question. I think the first part of your question was, since we're not required to. Do any further review or inventory of wetlands as part of goal five. If we just leave everything the way it is. Is that what your question is, we can just leave everything the way it is?
Well, yes, in another words. If the any rules apply to significant wetlands. And only significant wetlands, if no significant wetlands are accepted by the county. Is that a route that that could, is that an alternative for the county to take?
It, well, we do have significant wetlands that are identified in the comp plan already, we're not asking for those to be removed. I think if we, once we open it up and make a decision, we'd have to be able to justify through basically the same process you would go through to identify a wetland. To remove it. And I think once you start opening that process up, then you would have to comply with any requirements that would be in place.
The second part of my question would be the relationship on andronomous fish bearing streams. Are there laws that the county needs to abide by regardless of of what is discussed today or even what the county commissioners would would be discussing?
Well, any federal or state laws would be implemented by those agencies, they wouldn't be implemented necessarily through county staff. And I would not even begin to know which laws those might possibly be.
Alright, thank you.
And Nadia?
I want to acknowledge that we have a new commissioner that's on the call today, that this is the first time he's been been part of this, so I encourage Commissioner Powers to speak up if he has. Questions or wants staff to go over these concepts, I'm not sure if you've worked on this stuff before. I guess I. So there's pros and cons to both the standard approach and the safe harbor approach that have been outlined in the staff report and the crest. Report and the crest presentation and I hope most of us have an understanding about that. The thing that's not included though is the time that each approach takes and the cost to the county. And I feel like that's a really important element and I'm hoping that staff could speak to that a little bit. And and I I heard loud and clear from the Board of Commissioners that I think, you know, in in cities. And I may be wrong on this, but what I heard from the commissioners was like in Warrenton. They started with safe harbor or they, you know, they it was too broad brush and they like to have a standard inventory there, so they have some more. Specificity and then also can choose to not protect some wetlands, so it's a little. Less protective in some areas, but you know, that's a city, which it's a big city, but it's a city, I mean, in terms of land mass. So but I mean, what would be the implications of doing that on a county level, we're such a huge county? And we have a lot of wetlands and so I think I'd like to understand better about that, like, is it like, how feasible is it to do standard? How much time would it take, how much would it cost, like, so that's why I was thinking about, you know, and I I do feel like we have to do something, we've got to stop talking about and actually do something as a county. So you know, that's why I had asked about, can we start with the safe harbor approach and then as part of the process also identify areas that. That need more attention to convert from safe harbor to standard. I guess that's a lot of questions for staff, thank you.
Yeah, in terms of cost and time, I I couldn't even begin to estimate that what that might be. When we worked with Crest to do the draft update to the Duncan Thomas report. Because we knew some of those wetland boundaries had changed over the past forty years. So we we did that and I think that process maybe. Took about six to eight months and I think it was just under thirty thousand. That we did for that report, so if you were to extrapolate that across the entire county for a standard report, I mean, you can. Tell that's obviously gonna be several hundred thousands of dollars, if not more. I think what the state has tried to impress upon us and I tried to include in the memo was that it's not an either or. Situation and I think Lisa Phipps touched on that this morning as well, that there are options where. For example, with the old Duncan Thomas report and then the update that we have. For from Crest, you know, that might be an. An area where we already have known work where you could do more with a standard approach instead of. Reversing back out and saying, well, let's just do a safe harbor approach, even though we know we've got these wetlands here, you know, if you wanted to move forward with. Areas where we just don't know what we might have, you know, safe harbor makes sense until you can. Put a study on the ground to actually do a standard approach. I do want to stress it again, though, that there, while we have all these options, you could do standard, you could do safe harbor, you can do accommodation, again, we're not required to do anything. And so just to remind everyone that the board is not obligated to pick one or both of these approaches, that they have the option of also choosing not to do further work at this time.
Gail, can can I, can I seek a little clarity at least on? I understand that you don't want to. Make a too specific of an estimate, right, but I so but I'm hearing that. You know, it may cost some hundreds of thousands conceivably to do a standard inventory for the whole county. Can you can you give some sense of? The time element of that and and staff commitments, sort of things like that? And then can you just contrast that with what safe harbor would represent and in terms of? Cost and and. Dedicated staff time and things for the county. It and and I get what you're saying, that it's not a binary thing, I'm just trying to get a sense of like. What our options are, what these look like to us and in.
Okay, well, again, I I have never priced these things out, so I don't. I'm not able to give even. A close ballpark figure, the only real number that I can quote is what we paid for Crest for the update to Duncan Thomas. I mean, obviously, the amount of work involved with moving through a safe harbor process is. Obviously easier because it it breaks down, for example, with riparian areas, what you will be looking at, what will be considered as. Riparian areas and it's clearly defined what those areas are as opposed to ground truthing what might actually be the boundaries or something. So there would be obvious. Obviously less consultant time or no consultant time. Significantly. Less staff time, most likely, because you're not reviewing the work of a consultant. And there probably wouldn't be the volume of work that would come in if you were to do a standard approach throughout the entire county. I mean, in terms of staff time, I really couldn't even begin to estimate what what it would take to walk through either of these processes. So and I'm not trying to weasel out of your question, but I just really don't even have enough of a grasp of it to to really say what it would entail. For either process.
Okay, so I've got a handful of hands, as it were, right now, I think I saw Nadia and then Chris and then Jim.
Okay, so. So I mean, it is extra work, but I do think it's worth maybe trying to put together some sort of an estimate, so when it goes to the Board of Commissioners. They can see it, just at least like some sort of range or idea. Because, you know, that'll that should determine, help determine what they're interested in. Being the budget people. But, okay, I want to go back to riparian versus wetland, so we have. This great report from Crest, which is just goal five, so it would be just the like locally significant well and so not in any way all the wetlands and not the riparian. Areas either, so I just want to make a clarification, so there's kind of like two things we're talking about, one is. Inventorying and deciding a pathway for. Rivers, rivers and creeks, riparian areas, which may intersect with wetlands, but don't always. And then the wetlands and we have. You know, a report about goal five only wetlands. So then a process for them separates and I'm just trying to like be really clear, so like when we're making recommendations, maybe we're actually. Talk, we're making two recommendations, one around riparian and one around wetlands, does that make sense, Director Henrickson?
Yeah, so those were the two areas where you you as a committee had specifically asked for additional information on standard approach versus riparian. Safe harbor approach.
Chris.
Just, okay, a couple of comments, one is that the the Crest report actually does inventory quite a few. Goal sixteen type wetlands. They recognize that the. The titled zone. Is is one of the big. Wetland areas for the county and so they identified stretches along the Columbia and the. John Day River, the Wurukwuski and. I don't know, a couple others, so there is a lot of, they have a good table in that report, if you don't have time to read the whole thing. And it shows which wetland areas and their acreages go with. The two different goals, they acknowledged they didn't have the money to do the. The other areas, the. Goal seventeen, whatever, anyway, it's complicated, but. One thing that concerns me on the cost estimate idea is. That it focuses on the cost of doing the study and and. Better delineating the wetland areas that need to be protected. But. I think what would be really helpful if that was balanced with, and I know this is exorbitant and would never be done, but it's what's really needed. Is to balance that cost of doing the surveying and updating things. With the value of those wetlands and what they mean to our county in the long run. For the health of the fishery, the health of our. Groundwater systems, for the health of our. Whole biologic. Network of ecology that makes up. The surface layer of our county and shallow subsurface. I think that too often we look at the cost as a one-sided thing, but we have a great asset and spending some money on better understanding it has real value because we'll protect it and have it long into the future in the best condition that's possible, that will in the end pay back more than what we spend trying to understand it. It's a value. And if you don't show that, what what the wetlands mean economically beneficial to this county and always focus on how much it's costing the poor landowner to have to endure this hardship of having a wetland. Uh, we're missing a huge part of the whole story, and it's a real shame. And it shows a real lack of education and understanding, and I'm getting very tired of it. And you can tell I'm getting angry about it as well. And I think it's deserved. At any rate, I would propose not giving them not giving the Commissioners any idea of the cost unless you do a total cost analysis, the benefit side as well as the payout side. And keep in mind that when you do these studies, you're employing people, and some of those may be local people who are getting a good paying job. So it's part of the economy to do these kinds of things. And it makes the whole county stronger and help more healthy. Um, I forgot my other significant point that I was gonna make. So I'll just leave it at that. I'm getting kind of tired.
Thank you, Chris. Jim.
Uh, thank you. Uh, my my question has to do with the E S C E process and the uh standard uh uh protocols. That obviously is tremendous amount of work to go through that E S C E. Uh, and it also seems to me to be very site-specific. So we've been talking about doing the the standard uh protocols versus uh to safe harbor. But can you really do an E S C E on the whole county? Or do you have to wait for a particular project to to be proposed and then an E S C E is done on that particular site?
Okay, so let's backtrack a little bit. So talking specifically about riparian areas now. If you want to go through a standard report uh approach, there are certain sources that you have to consult. So it would be Department of Forestry, USGS, the National Wetlands Inventory Maps, uh ODFW, FEMA, and then aerial photographs. And from there, you are gonna pull out what you deem as um potential sites that you want to examine further. So first of all, that's your first step. It's identify your potential significant resource sites using these sources at a minimum. Um, from there, that's when you would go into your E C um analysis. And so you're gonna be looking at the value of the site and potential impacts to that significant riparian area based upon uses around it and potential uses that could occur around it. And basically, what you're gonna do is you're gonna make one of three findings. You're either gonna say that the resource is so important that we should prohibit all other development around it in order to protect it. Or you're gonna say the resource is not that important and we can allow other uh re uh uses around it and not worry about the resource itself, or you're gonna pick something that's in the middle. And I think I have derailed my own train and forgotten what your question was, Jim, so.
Oh, well, it might might be, you're actually beginning to address it knowing that, yeah, the E, the E C is isn't a laborious process, quite frankly.
Yeah.
Was it site-specific or you're doing it, uh, while you're doing a countywide, but only on significant, declared significant riparian areas?
Well, they are, yeah. So once you've declared um uh significant, so let me back up even further. So there are four steps when you're looking to determine uh a significant resource. So first of all, you go around and collect the information on what you think is a potential resource. You determine whether or not the information that you've collected is adequate for you to make that decision. And there are specific criteria that have to be met for a county to make that decision. Um, and then if you think you've got enough adequate information, then you determine whether or not locally, that's a significant resource for your local area. And then once you've identified that, yes, it's significant, then you adopt it into goal five and you put together protections for that source. And part of that protection development pulls in the E C. So at that, by the time you get to an E C, it's already been um identified that these are by significant resources. So you may have gone from a pool of a hundred down to a final total of ten. And so you'd be conducting ten of those. Um, I think, you know, for example, Duncan Thomas originally had I want to say there were about sixty sites in various areas of the county. And so you would, if that was your starting source, um, and you wanted all of those to be significant, then you would conduct sixty different E S E evaluations to uh pull together the final determination about what level of protection was needed for what resource. So the standard approach is actually, it can be very fine-grained. And so again, it can be very time-consuming. It could involve the use of consultants. It could involve the use of staff. Not to make Commissioner Farrar any more angrier than he is, but more angry than he is. But anyway, so I don't know if that addressed your question, Jim, or not.
Yeah, yes, it did. Thank you very much.
Jim, uh, I've got Charles and then Nadia and then Cheryl. Charles?
Yeah, thanks, uh, Andy. Um, so my my concern is it kind of at a high level. Um, and that is that you know, the the wetlands exist where the wetlands exist and and they've been there for a long, long time. Um, either that or they've already been paved over and disappeared. Um, but there's a reason why they they still exist. Uh, and it's because, as we've learned over the last forty years, they have a great deal of value uh from a number of standpoints, both from, you know, salmonid habitat to uh flood control. Um, a number of valuable uh benefits uh to the environment and and to the habit habitability of the local area. So I think wetland, I think hopefully people can all agree wetlands are important. Um, and I think we also need to recognize that, you know, Duncan Thomas, as with many other studies in the county with respect to gold five resources, uh, kind of started out in the in the north part of the county. There's a lot of funding back in the day around the Columbia River and the Columbia River estuaries and anything to do about the Columbia River. Uh, so all of that stuff got done back, you know, back in the seventies or or maybe the eighties. And was funded um to to do that, but it didn't reach down, as an example, into the South County. Might not have reached out to Jewel or Mist or other places. I don't know, but for sure it didn't reach down into the South County. And we do have, uh, you know, many wetlands in the South County, and those wetlands in my eyes, anyway, are just as valuable as the wetlands in, let's say, Klaasop Plains or other places in the county. Um, so I I think in my eyes, they're all worthy of protection. And I certainly would like to come up with a way to protect them and and find there, there's various approaches that can be done to, you know, either the safe harbor approach or the E C approach. Um, uh, can define them. But it doesn't all have to be funded by the county. As an example, in Arch Cape, the local community was so concerned with the the protection of our wetlands that a number of community organizations all pitched in, you know, ten fifteen thousand dollars a piece to cut to fund the study, to do a local wetland inventory. And then to get that local wetland inventory uh approved and adopted by D S L. Uh, so it's now part of D S L's uh wetlands inventory. Uh, so communities can can, you know, that are concerned about their wetlands certainly have the option to do this themselves. It's just that then the county, you know, really should take advantage of the communities that do that. It should recognize and adopt those local wetland inventories. Uh, so it doesn't all have to be on the back of the of the county to do the work. Uh, but I think the protection absolutely has to come from the county because it has to be translated at some point into a zoning ordinance. Uh, whether it's a local uh wetland, sorry, sorry, a lake and wetland um overlay zone or whether it's uh, you know, a local wetland inventory. Uh, so at the end of the day, for our discussion here, I would certainly like to make sure that we acknowledge the fact that there are many weapons that weren't included in Duncan Thomas report, may not have been included in the Crest report. Uh, but are still significant and still deserve to be protected. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Charles. I've got uh Nadia and then Cheryl and then Chris.
Um, I wanted to just um, uh, so thank you, Commissioner Farrar, for that. Um, reminder that uh wetlands have value, monetary, but bigger value. Um, and just note that, you know, my intention is not to compare that, it's to compare the two approaches so that the Commissioners really have, like, when they say, like, okay, we want to just do the standard approach across the entire county. They really recognize that they've chosen an expensive and time-consuming route. And um, and so that would help them maybe come to some middle ground. And and so that was, that was my hope, just understanding that better. And and so I'm really interested in staff's opinion. Um, because they have more expertise than I do on this topic. And so I'm wondering if Director Hendrickson, like, if you were given your druthers, whether, you know, it 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 feels to me, and I feel like I'm just reading between the lines, but it feels to me that staff might suggest that um that the county explorer, the standard approach, if we're just talking about wetlands, um, on the goal five wetlands outlined in Crest's new support, new report. Um, and potentially do safe harbor for now on riparian areas that have been inventoried and um other wetlands not identified in that report. Um, do you have any comments on that, Director Hendrickson? Do you have a suggestion?
Yeah, so speaking specifically about wetlands now and not touching on riparian corridors or riparian areas, but only on wetlands. So uh, if we're doing a standards approach to wetland, the first step is the jurisdiction or somebody would need to can uh complete a local wetland inventory. And I know that Mr. Dice has talked about the one that was done for Arch Cave Cove Beach area, uh, which has never been adopted by the board. Uh, we did spend the money to have the Duncan Thomas report updated. So we do have that information that could be submitted uh to Department of State Lands to get that approved and then have that adopted as part of this process. Or maybe further on down the process, not in July. Um, and then basically using that information to update where we have that lake and wetland zoning. So I think you're correct, Chair Gardner, that uh, with the Duncan Thomas update in the Crest report, we could probably make a recommendation to the board uh for a standard approach there because we have that fine-grained information. Uh, regarding safe harbor wetlands, um, basically, we we are practicing this to an extent uh at this time, which, you know, requires um well, maybe I'm gonna rephrase that. So with with regard to safe harbor approach for wetlands, what we would have to do is um, we'd have to put in place an ordinance that restricts grading, excavation, placement of fill and vegetation removal. And then um, there is a variance procedure for that if it would basically take away or render the property unbuildable. And then there's a third approach with wetlands uh here, which is basically, I think, what the county is more or less following to an extent. Uh, is that we haven't adopted the statewide wetland inventory, but we do under state statute or Oregon administrative roles, we're required to put a wetland notice in with Department of State Lands every time we receive an application for a development in an area that has mapped wetlands or could affect mapped wetlands. Um, so we do follow that process and I I guess that would be more of a uh formalization of it to actually adopt that and make it a requirement in our code as well. But we do pretty much follow that process. So wetlands for safe harbor and standard approach actually provides us with three options. I don't know if I completely answered your question, uh, Chair Gardner, but.
Nadia, do you have follow-up on that?
Yeah, thank you, I'm sure Davis. Um, that's super helpful, um, Director Hendrickson. Um, so you need a local well and inventory. So I I remember Denise Loftman, the Director of Crest, saying that their reports like super close to being a local wetland inventory. So they could with not very much effort upgrade that, and that could be submitted for D L C D for adoption by the state. And then also we have a local inventory for Arch Cave Falcon Cove Beach that's already been adopted by the state. So those two areas we could recommend uh the standard approach. And then I think you're saying the state, uh, then then the then recommend that there be a safe harbor approach for the rest using the local wetland inventory, the statewide local wetland inventory. Is that right? I it was a little confusing to me at the end.
Yeah, so for uh the Arch Cave Cove Beach local wetland inventory and what would have to be the uh, sort of made more robust Crest report. Uh, um, those go, in in the case of the Arch Cave local wetland inventory uh, has already been to Department of State Lands. State Lands has reviewed what was shown as the boundaries of the wetland areas and has approved that. So it does not have to go to um D L C D. It'll go straight to Department of State Lands. Uh, and then the local government also has to adopt that. So that would be our Board of Commissioners would have to adopt both the L W I and the updated Duncan Thomas Crest Report. So that would be a standard, standard approach. And then for the safe harbor, and I apologize because we've not gone through this process, so I'm learning it more or less as you're learning it. So I have to reread my notes as I go through. Uh, but basically, uh, there's the safe harbor approach for wetlands, which requires us to adopt the ordinance with the restrictions and then put in a variance procedure uh, in case we would render a property unbuildable. And then there's a third option, which is an alternative basically to both the standard and the safe harbor harbor approaches. And uh, this is applicable only to areas outside of an urban growth boundary or urban unincorporated area. And so that would cover unincorporated Klaasop County. Uh, we either have to adopt the statewide wetland inventory, which is a higher level look at wetlands. So it's not as fine-grained as a local wetland inventory, but it's the the next level up from there. Uh, so we would either adopt that as part of our comprehensive plan or as some sort of land use uh regulation. And then using that as our base for identifying wetlands, then we would adopt specific regulations uh that would require us to send in that notice to Department of State Lands, which we already do. Uh, we're already required to do it under um the state process. So every time somebody comes in with a permit that may affect wetlands or has wetlands mapped on the property, we're required to send a notice to Department of State Lands. They have thirty days to review it and let the applicant know if there's going to be any permitting uh required at the state level. So that's what that notice is all about. Um, and then we can do our own inventory and protect wetlands uh via a wa- a wetland conservation plan. And I'm not exactly sure what that entails or what that is. Um, I wasn't, I didn't immediately find where that was laid out and then ran out of time to meet the deadline to get an agenda out. So I don't have any more information about wetland conservation plans. So did that help clarify a little bit? Chair Gardner?
Nadia's lost the mute button.
Sorry, I lost my mute, my mute button. Um, kind of, so I, I'm seeing that as the, now I'm looking, I thank you for putting that up, page nineteen at the bottom. That's the alternative standard, alternative to standard or safe harbor approaches. Um. And I will, yeah, so let's also know, I'm just acknowledge what um, uh, Charles Dice said that um. You know, we could do something broader and then local communities could get together and fundraise and get. More accurate local wetland inventories um, completed around in, in high concerned areas too. Um, and then we could maybe convert those areas over time to um, be more. Standard process, but um, it feels to me like the most important. Recommendation, the most important thing for the county they move forward with. Is to, is the thing that's the low hanging fruit that is the most important, identified as the most important wetlands throughout the county, which are the ones, the goal, the. Uh, significant wetlands. I mean, of course, I want to protect most wetlands in the county, but um. But, you know, we've done a lot of the work already and um, those are identified. And so if, if. You know, if we have an opportunity to use that information, maybe refine it a little bit and then do that in the standard process. Then that feels like a strong recommendation to me. And then. We can, then this, this, the next step down would be the riparian areas and then the other things. And I haven't quite settled on kind of. Top recommendation for those yet. Thank you for letting me babble.
Um, so I've got, I've got Cheryl and Chris, though I want to express anyway. Um, so. I have reservations about what Charles and, and now Nadia have expressed about communities doing um, their own studies. And us depending on that in any way, just because. Not all communities have equal resources to, to bring to bear, to confront these problems and. A lot of the environmental effects are not localized to those communities. So it's in the benefit of the whole county. Uh, to have a thorough inventory that protects all of the resources that may be uh, contributing to the. Ecosystem of our county. So I. I just prefer us not going in that direction as the dependents anyway. Okay, um, so I've got Cheryl and then Chris and then Susanna.
This is an excellent conversation on a subject that is so complex. When I first sat down to read through this, I just got overwhelmed. And if we recall during this two-year process, we've been grappling with goal five for a long period of time. And now we're only on a subset of goal five and it's still very complex. And I feel sorry. Uh, for Mr. Powers and anybody else who's new to this process, but that, the discussion is. Is really quality and I feel like we're getting a handle on what the issues are. And I can see brains beginning to work and I, I think we're going to be able to move to some policies today. I want to just for one minute to take us back out to the two thousand foot issue and, and just say. More than once today and more than once in the written uh, information, it says that, that we don't have to update goal five. Um, Clatsop County is no longer subject to periodic review mandate. Therefore, there is no mandate to update and amend goal five or its associated inventories. Isn't that true for the entire thing? There is no mandate to update. The comprehensive land use plan, but indeed, isn't that the process that we are currently engaged in over the last two years? So what I don't understand is there is no mandate to update it, yet we are updating it. So. Why is it pointed out that we don't have to update goal five?
Gil, do you have any feedback on that question?
We tried to provide all the information that we have. If the information says you don't have to do it, we would provide that to you. Because it gives you another option. Um.
Okay, so, so the goal five. Wetlands and riparian is not different from the rest of the plan. You just wanted to make sure that, that we had that information and be able to apply it to this one.
Yes, I was specifically asked by the committee members to bring back additional information regarding the standard approach. And the safe harbor approach, which I've done. Part of that information includes the fact that. You, we as a county are not required to do anything with this information.
Okie dokie, thank you.
Chris and then Susanna.
Okay, um. First, I'd like to address the comments that. Uh, Chair Davis. Made regarding. Entities smaller than the county or um. Geographically smaller, not in stature, but in the location, uh, taking on the responsibility of, of uh. Carrying out the more standard approach on wetland delineations of. Versus, you know, it's the county's responsibility. I, I thought that uh. Andy Davis made some very good points there. But in listening to Charles Dice earlier, I was, I was thinking, now there's a guy that can. Speak the way I wish I could, keep a level head and say something worthwhile and um. Again, I don't see why it can't be a mix of these things. I don't see why we shouldn't uh, allow for. More detailed surveys to be done by other groups that may get funding for doing so or. Um, maybe a conservation group actually has someone on staff that has the expertise to do it. These kinds of things, but that the county should. Uh, at some level acknowledge the importance of, of getting these surveys. Done in a reasonably timely. Uh, way so that we don't lose something of value while we're standing around twiddling our thumbs, trying to think about the best way to do it. So I kind of. Like a mix and match approach on uh. Who does the surveys, where the surveys are done? Are they a localized thing or are they countywide? Uh, and I like definitely a mix and match on. Safe harbor versus uh, the standard approach. It makes a lot of sense. Um, if there's nothing else immediately available, it seems like safe harbor is, is the starting point. And then if you want to refine things, um. I'm assuming this can be done geographical area by geographical area. It doesn't have to be done. Countywide, but maybe it could be done within a watershed. Um, I have a couple of questions that I don't know if um. Director Hendrickson can provide me with a. Answer on, but I'm, I'm wondering if we can learn something by looking at some of our nearby counties. Are, are any of the other counties, there's, there's. I think eight of them along the coast that it would be similar to us in some ways, although they differ north to south, but. You know, Lincoln County, Tillamook County, um, have, have any of these coups county? Have they, have they? Gotten further with their comp plans? Are they more recently updated? Do they address the wetlands and s- in some way that. We could learn from them instead of, you know, we could, we could see what success they had with the choice they made, that kind of thing. It, it might be helpful, maybe not for this group, but ultimately for the county commissioners to consider what's worked elsewhere. Um, the other thing I was wondering about. Is the distribution of wetlands and if anybody has looked at. How many of these wetlands are completely on or mostly on. County land or possibly in a few cases, state land. Um, and how many are on, how many acres are on private land and um, could the county. Work out arrangements with private owners that have a lot of wetland br- boundary on a piece of land to, to swap the land and. And hold that land in kind of a reserve than uh, protecting the wetland. And allowing development by a, a private property owner to take place somewhere else. Um. Have, have all these options been thrown around, discussed? And at what point do we work those in? I know those. Specific ideas can't come into a comp plan write-up. But it seems like there's stuff that we should consider as solutions to. What we're ultimately trying to do, protect a very valuable resource. And I had a bunch of other things, but uh. That's my random thoughts at this moment.
Gil, uh, do you have feedback on either of those two questions from Chris? And then I'll just say I've got Susanna, Pat and then Jim.
So with regard to the first question, which is, uh, have we done a, a survey of other counties? Wetland policies or goal five. Uh, goal, goals five. We, I can tell you that the, the only county of the thirty-six. That has recently gone through a comp plan update like this is Wasco County. Um, probably not a good comparable to Clatsop County. Uh, along the coast, uh, none of the plans have been updated recently. I think Deschutes County is just starting a process to do a whole comprehensive review of its comprehensive plan. Uh, but since the end of periodic review, because as we've learned, it's time-consuming to go through this process. Um, most counties have not chosen to undertake such a process. So I don't know that we have a good comparable out there. But I have not done any really serious investigation to see what. Work may have gone on outside of a big comp plan update. Um. The second part of your question, which dealt with, I think, public versus private lands. Um, I don't know what discussions may have occurred forty years ago or previous to when I arrived here in twenty eighteen. So I don't, I can't answer that with any certainty. I know that we do have. Uh, transfers of density rules that are on the books so that, for, for example. If I do own a property that is wetlands or some other area that should be preserved or conserved. That I have the option to voluntarily uh, rezone my property and then uh, basically bank those. Unused development credits that can be transferred to another property somewhere else, uh, primarily on the Clatsop Plains at this point. Uh, so we do have a, a small piece of that already in place, but uh, nothing on a grand scale where we've actually worked with. Uh, swapping county-owned land or uh, working with the state to swap state-owned land to protect pri- uh. Wetlands on private property.
Thanks, Gil. Okay, uh, I've got Susanna, Pat and then Jim. Susanna, you're on mute at the moment. There you go.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I just unmuted. So. I liked what Charles Dice said. Um, I don't think that. Any wetlands have been identified on the Nahalem River. I know the ones, I mean, the ones that I know about are not the really large, significant, well, uh. Habitat issue of, of the fishes and everything else, frogs, et cetera. These wetlands are very important, but I don't know that they're large enough to fit in the significant category. Uh, the seaside rivers outside the unincorporated area, I'm not sure that they. The, those wetlands have been inventoried and then. The question about the word inventory, which comes up a lot. If, does that mean just one can be identified without having to go through. All the wetlands. Um, and. Another comment is that these studies can be manipulated. I, I talked to the fellow who did the Warrenton Wetland Inventory and he told me he had done it at. Below his costs really, because it is very expensive, because he wanted to know, for everybody to know that he. Does this kind of work and it would give him good kind of PR in a sense or. And that it was the opposite because people that wanted to develop around wetlands. Did not want to hire him because it meant that their properties might not be developable. So they could choose somebody else to do wetlands inventory. That would not identify them as wetlands, i.e. what I'm saying is. Studies can be, I don't know if you would say manipulated, but the outcomes can vary greatly. As to how they are approached. So I want to make that comment. And what I would like to see is an approach that has. Includes the best definition of wetlands, the soil types, the flora and fauna types that are very. Um, particular to a wetlands. Um, and also, I mean, and, and just in flooding. They are often areas that do flood and shouldn't be developed anyway. Um, even with all the FEMA mitigation stuff of raising houses up, et cetera. I don't think that's significant for the wetlands that are, that I know of, that are out in the jewel area. I think those are my comments and I've just, my question is, my, my impression is, is that the safe harbor approach. Is the most protective approach, maybe the most awkward approach, but the most protective. And the other big question is, is can just one wetland that's come up. In a proposal be uh, identif- can be studied. Without doing a complete inventory, which to me would leave out, as I said, in the Nahalem drainage. A whole lot of little wetlands. I think most of them out here are, are small compared to the coastal wetlands. All right, that's all. Thanks.
Susanna. Gil.
Okay, so to answer uh, Susanna's first question. So there's a process again that we go through. It's basically a four-step process. So we collect information about. Potential goal five resource sites and we'll, we'll limit it just to wetlands right now. So you would collect any information you could find, which would include any existing inventories or surveys that have been done. Or any other data that's available about a. Uh, the goal five resource sites. We'd be looking at wetlands. I don't see anything that says you have to review multiple. Sites at a time. I don't know why you couldn't just pick one wetland for in-depth study. Uh, and I didn't see anything in state statute. I mean, if you're going through the process, you may as well go through the process, but. I don't think that's either here nor there. Uh, regarding your uh, discussion about people. Doing cut-rate studies to get market advantage or some to, you know. Create their own outcome. Remember that all of these local wetland inventories do have to get reviewed by Department of State Lands. And Department of State Lands has to sign off on them and their sign-off is going to be based on data that's collected, including soils and vegetation. And all the other things that people look at to determine whether or not a wetland exists. So. I, I don't think that we have to worry about something, someone coming in from out of state, uh, you know, kind of on the fly, back door. You know, putting out wetland studies that don't pass muster because the state's going to have to review them.
Gil, could, could you, um, could you address to the, the, Susanna sort of asked a question about whether. It was safe to characterize a safe harbor approach as the. More protective of approaches. And I'm wondering if, if you think that's a fair characterization or not.
I, I don't know that it's. More protective because if you go through a standard approach, you could be very protective because you're. Um, you know, you're going to put in place ordinances that protect a resource based on what your EC analysis has set. So it's a little bit more fine-grained. I don't think it's accurate to say it's more protected. I think what, what, what might be accurate to say it's easier. Uh, to do and maybe a quicker process.
Thank, thank you. Thank, thank you for clarifying that. Okay, so I had Pat and then Jim.
And what's on our test and covered important.
Pat, I, I apologize. It sounds kind of like you're underwater at the moment. Is your mic obstructed or anything?
Gosh, um, I don't know.
That's a bit better, anyway.
Okay. And I didn't point out that any states that are need pass muster and acceptance idea, though, I think is a proper effective muster. Are equity issues, if we can afford those, be sure. But I think Susanna's point of kind of checking kind of irresponsible consulting can be addressed there. And then with those DSL those can be the boundary for a subsequent land swap or charge that we brought up as well.
Okay. I did have a hard time understanding a fair bit of that, Pat. I, I do think you were expressing support for a mixed approach. You were supporting the DLCD resources as a fallback, yeah? Okay. Was there anything else that we need to capture there out of that comment that I didn't?
I'll put it in chat. You're good.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize, it was hard to hear you in that. Jim?
Well, I think a number of us is coming to the same conclusion. One is that the standard approach really isn't practical, especially for the riparian. You know, it's, I just don't think it's practical. I think a number of us are gravitating towards a hybrid approach. And exactly how far down that path is, is not quite clear. The first step to me is very obvious, is you start working with the CREST report because that's recent. And it does significant amount of work already to go down, to, to decide on which wetlands are significant. On the riparian corridor, I think what Gail mentioned earlier makes a lot of sense, is use the safe harbor approach. And you just include a couple of the guideline, not guidelines, of rules that the state has for adopting the, the safe harbor approach. And then in terms of coming up with a phased approach, which comes after the, the crest wetlands, it's not quite clear to me. But I think some kind of a framework should be developed. I don't even know if it's within this group or not. In order to come up with, we'll attack this portion of it next, and then another portion next. And as been mentioned before, is that you don't have to take, you, you can just work on a watershed-by watershed basis, as Chris said, because that, that is an obvious unit of measure. What, what level hook, I'm not really sure. But I, I think we're kind of coalescing around a few basic principles. So what I would suggest is we, we sort of agree to some really basic approaches. And then if we all agree to that basic approach, we can decide whether we should want to go any farther than that, or just say, or just say, leave it at that as a recommendation to the, to the board, to the Cl辛 Board.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Cheryl.
I agree with Jim. I think there are some things that we are coalescing around. If Andy and Gail, if you think that, that we're coming to a, the close of our, of our big discussion, and we're ready to move to looking at policies, I, I have a draft policy that addresses exactly what Jim was saying, that we begin by accepting the, the CREST report.
Look, Cheryl, I'm, I'm happy for us to move to that. Let me just check with the group. Are there, are there any other questions that people would like to add? So we've, we sort of skipped over, Gail initiated this discussion with a question about like, how much presentation we should have? We sort of skipped over that and just went into questions to Gail, trying to gain clarity on these issues. But I want to make sure, before we move to policies, is there anything else that, that people need to be resolved about standard versus safe harbor versus a hybrid approach? Any questions of clarification that we need to touch on before we go into the policy section?
Andy, and also, are there things that Gail would like to present to us that didn't come up in the marathon Q and A? I mean, we sort of also skipped over her opportunity to present.
Thank, thank you, Cheryl. Yeah, that's, that's important, too. Gail, Gail, is there anything else that you would like to clarify before we move on?
No, there isn't. I think our questions and your discussion touched on most of the important points.
Okay. And then for the group, anything else before we move to the policy section? And then I'll, I'll just restate my understanding from the, from the materials that we were provided. You know, we wanted to have a review, which we've, we've now done, of safe harbor versus standard approach versus some sort of hybrid. We wanted to move to policies and then to, they were asked to give a recommendation from the group about how we'd like that safe harbor versus standard versus hybrid approach to, to sort of be implemented in some way. So I'm sort of thinking, we'll look through the policies and then we'll come back to this safe harbor versus standard question toward the end of our discussion today. It is notable, we're not talking, you know, Cheryl, you, you may have a policy here that's, that's about incorporating the CREST study, that's, that's fine. It was specifically asked that we not try to get into the inventory work today, or ESSC, or ESE work, because that's sort of outside of the scope and time we have allotted for us today. So are we good with moving to policies? And then we'll come back to the, the safe harbor versus standard question toward the end. Okay, let's, let's go for that. This has, if you're following along in your own packet, that means moving to the very end of the packet after the inventory materials. So we have, I don't know, is it page one nineteen, I think, in the, in the packet? But let's start with Cheryl. You have, you had a motion that you already put forward in the chat. Let's start with that. Do you want to introduce and read, read off what you put in?
Sure. So the riparian section is first followed by wetlands on one nineteen, and then this is over on one twenty-one, so indeed it would go at the end of the wetlands section. And this wording, I actually took out of the material that was presented to us on page eighteen in the wetlands resources, and I just cleaned it up a little bit. "The county shall utilize the information in the CREST wetlands report," thinking of Jim and all the people who want us to cite the sources, "twenty twenty or the most recent as the basis for a work plan to pursue the identification of significant wetlands and adoption of appropriate local protection elements."
Okay. Thank you, Cheryl. Is there a second for the motion to include this policy O? Check and make sure we're not just all slow on the trigger here. Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Okay, I, I think Charles quietly, I think Pat did sec- tried to second that. So, okay, we've got a, a motion and a second. So we've got a policy O, I'll, I'll reread it again. It reads, "Policy O, the county shall utilize the information in the CREST wetlands report twenty twenty or most recent as the basis for a work plan to pursue the identification of significant wetlands and the adoption of appropriate local protection elements." Discussion on this. Pat, and I will say, Pat, you continued to be quiet when you seconded. I did appreciate you putting your, your comment in chat about DSL. If, let's try the audio, but if we still can't hear you, I may just tell you that and ask you to put commentary in chat. And then I've got Jim after Pat.
Thank you.
Can you type it in chat, Pat? I'm sorry, it, it almost sounds like you, you come in strong, so, and then you quiet off, so it's almost like your background noise filter is catching your voice and cutting you off eventually. But yeah, please type in. And let's go to.
Actually, I think the question was if DSL had approved or signed off on the CREST study, which we, it's not in a state or final state of preparation to be submitted, and it hasn't been submitted. So no, no DSL review or approval at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Gil. Thank you for interpreting that accurately, too. Jim?
I, I just have a question for clarification. The, the CREST report is still in draft form. So I, I'm not sure if we can actually have a policy to accept a draft. Or maybe we could rephrase it so that, assuming that it will be final, that encourage the county to adopt it, or I'm not too sure, because, because it, it's not final and it hasn't been accepted. Maybe we could get some advice from Director Hendrickson?
Okay, so I know Cheryl's motion did say twenty twenty or most recent, but if we want to fine-grain it, then we could say that the county should utilize, and you can choose should, should or shall, I'm not going to weigh in on that one. Should finalize the CREST, CREST twenty twenty CREST report, submit it to Department of State Lands and then adopt. That's what I would say. That spells out all the steps that need to be done.
Gail, is it possible for you to put that draft language on screen for us, just so that we could consider it as a group real quick? Thank you.
Is this better, Andy?
A little bit. I heard, is this better, Andy? So got that much out of it?
Just want to, any better?
Yes, that was, that was better, Pat. Thank you. So let me, let me state a question here for the group, maybe, which is just so, so I, I guess I have a concern with, with this language, and I know that we've, we've got CREST language earlier in the, in the policies here, too. But can, can anyone clarify for me the the permanency of CREST itself as an organization? Jan, maybe? I know, I know they've been around for like forty years, but it, is it like we sometimes refer to statutory agencies and things that I'm pretty confident are not going to go away or change markedly, but that, that's a concern for me, both in this policy and the earlier one, frankly, but, Jan?
The person to whom I am related is the Astoria representative to CREST. And their budget is really sound. They are recognized by folks like, you know, folks, big folks who need, who need their approval in order to go ahead and do what they do. I just don't think there's, they've been solid in the twenty-seven years I've been here, and I don't see any reason to think that's going to change.
So I don't know if I'm getting these in the right order, but I've got Nadia and Pat.
Um, so I, I'm not sure what we should make as recommendations and what we should put in our objectives and policies in the comp plan. And so I was just, I was more thinking like what we've been talking about previously, a recommendation. So you know, I just want us to think about, you know, this is a, this is the comp plan, it's going to be there for ten years, maybe it's stronger if it's in here, but if there's, I mean, maybe we do both. We put in some, some, you know, some, some policies in here, and we also reiterate as recommendations to the commission. But I just want to think about that and also look back at the policies we already have and see if there's any, if this is duplicative or if this is conflicting, and I haven't really had a chance to do that yet. But I, I know we have like policy E, you know, there, there are already ones that are earlier on page one twenty that talk about the CREST study and ESE. So policy G, goal five, conduct an ESE analysis to determine, you know, so anyway, yes, that's what I'm wondering.
Thank you, Nadia. Pat?
I, I'm just to the, CREST has BPA funding as a, as a solid core and a number of governments. It's a quasi-governmental organization. I think it's around as long as, as most are. I, I think, and it would therefore, they're substantial enough that I think that report, if there is a process to submitting it to DSL for acceptance, would be able to do so. I would expect their reports to pass that muster and would prefer that that happened sooner rather than later. And the policy we have is to accept those DSL accepted terms and incorporate those into the comp plan.
Yeah.
Thanks, Pat.
Better said.
Okay, Andy, so let's, Gail, can you go back down to the language, the sort of amended language that you had suggested? So I want to, we had a motion on the table with Cheryl's language. We can take, if someone wants to make a motion to, to accept this language as amended language, I'm, I'm happy to take that. And then we can move forward, or if you all read this and don't like it, that's fine, too. We'll go with what the, the body wants here, but Chris, you have your hand up.
Just a quick note, I, I see the date as twenty twenty-one for that report on what was provided to us here in the packet. So it's minor point.
Thank you, Chris. So, so does anyone care to make a motion to, to amend and adopt the language provided by Gail here as opposed to the language in, in Cheryl's original motion?
I move that, that we amend and adopt the, the motion.
Okay, and Cheryl, can I take that as a second from you, since you were also trying to move that? Okay. So we've got a motion to amend the motion and replace with the language, "The county should finalize the CREST wetlands report twenty twenty-one, submit the report to the Department of State Lands for review and approval, and adopt the final DSL approved report. The report should be used as the basis for a work plan to pursue the identification of significant wetlands and adoption of appropriate local protection elements." Okay, so any discussion of so this discussion right now can just be discussion about whether or not this is an appropriate replacement for Cheryl's language? Any discussion of this as replacement language? Is there any objection to replacing Cheryl's original language with this language? Okay, so I'm not hearing objection. So I'll say that passes by unanimous consent. We'll move back to the, what is now the main motion, which is to include a policy O, which is the blue highlighted material on the screen right now, which is, or excuse me, the blue underlined to clarify, because they're both blue highlighted, I guess. Blue underlined material on the screen right now, reading, "The county should finalize the CREST wetlands report twenty twenty-one, submit the report to the Department of State Lands for review and approval, and adopt the final DSL approved report. The report should be used as the basis for a work plan to pursue the identification of significant wetlands and adoption of appropriate local protection elements." Any discussion on the adoption of that policy O? Susanna?
So, CREST is about the Columbia River.
Susanna, I apologize. At least I am hearing you as pretty garbled right now.
As, I don't know quite what to do about it.
Actually, you've come in.
Am I any better?
Yes, yes.
I am better. Okay. So, CREST is about Columbia River, correct? But does it extend past the Columbia River?
But does it extend past the Columbia River drainages? Because surface wise, this county is significantly more than the Columbia River drainage. Back again to the Nahalum and the seaside rivers in my area that I'm representing. So I don't know if that makes a difference or not. Should we include more than just Crest?
So will, will Crest, Crest inventories include county resources that are not exclusive to the Columbia River? Can anybody answer that question for Susanna? Chris?
Yes, they'll work anywhere in the county, apparently. If you, if you read the report and I highly recommend, I know it's a little bit lengthy, but it's worth going through this report page by page. There's a lot of information in here. And if you look at the inventory of, of the wetlands that they did, they include a lot of areas along Klatsup Plains, which isn't really part of the Columbia River drainage. It also includes the Willowski, which I know feeds ultimately into the Columbia estuary. But yeah, they have the staff and capability and contacts to carry out this kind of survey anywhere in the county, including Jewel.
Thank you, Chris. Gail?
Yeah, also with regard to the policy that you're looking at, it's talking about a specific report that's already been prepared by Crest. It's not saying that in the future, we will only utilize Crest to look at wetlands, so.
And I wouldn't want that anyway.
Thank you for the clarification, Gail.
I guess my criteria is that it meets the criteria of acceptance by DSL, not is any report that Crest would generate for as, for sure as a clarification.
Thanks, Pat. Okay, any other discussion before we go to a vote? Okay, let, let me ask then. Then I'll just reread policy O again. So this is a motion to insert a policy O. Reading the county should finalize the Crest Wetlands Report 2021. Submit the report to the Department of State Lance for review and approval and adopt the final DSL approved report. The report should be used as the basis for a work plan to pursue the identification of significant wetlands and adoption of appropriate local protection elements. So that is the motion we're considering. Pat, did you have further discussion?
I guess I did. As far as the report should, the report should be used as a basis. I mean, again, I think what staff is, is kind of cautioning us about the specificity of a particular report. I don't know for words, more things, submitting this right now.
I, I think honestly, even though that seems like a small change, I think that's a significant, that's a substantial change in effect. So let me ask, is there a second for the amendment to be used, used as a basis for a work plan? To replace used as the basis for a work plan? Is there a second? Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Let me, let me check and see, is there any objection to the change for used as a basis for a work plan as opposed to used as the basis for a work plan? Any objection to changing that? Okay, Pat, thank you for the suggestion. I believe that's accepted by unanimous consent. Okay, so back to the main motion. I'm not going to read it again. I just read it a second ago. But let me see. So we've got a policy O on screen now. We just got a, an amendment from used as to re-used as a basis for a work plan. On that policy O, is there any objection to adopting that policy O as part of goal five? Okay, I'm not hearing any objections. So I believe that that's approved by the group. I am getting a chat message and I know Nadia left one a bit earlier about lunch. So we've just finished this item. Let's poll the group. Are, are we in favor of taking a lunch break? Typically, we do a half hour recess. Is that something that the group would be interested in at this time? And then probably returning at essentially 15 after one? Any objection to a recess for 30 minutes? Okay, let's recess for 30 minutes and come back at 1:15 according. Thank you. So we'll return from our recess to consider policies in goal five. Just as a reminder, we've got two main items of business left sort of in the goal five consideration. First is getting through the policy section and then second is giving some sort of finalized direction on the safe harbor standard review question to staff. So let's jump back into policies. So we just finished up policy O. Are there any other policies for inclusion or discussion of existing policies that the group would like to take up? And I have a feeling we're not all back yet. I'm going to delay a little bit by just asking Clark, you're relatively, the newcomer here. Is discussion and everything working okay for you today? Or do you have questions or procedural things that you'd like?
Well, I'm sure I have a thousand questions, but I'm absorbing this, getting educated. I'm just following the dialogue right now.
Okay. If, please don't hesitate to jump in and ask if, if we're glossing over something that would be helpful for you to get more explanation on.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, well, let's figure out if we've got anything to, to review here. Gail, am I correct that we, we have actually looked at these policies before? This is just final review of this section?
Yeah, we brought back the riparian corridor policies and the wetland policies specifically to see if there is anything else that needed to be added to address the, the different approach, approaches that could be taken to wetlands, so.
Okay, thank you. Cheryl, was that a hand or just a idle exercise of?
Definitely idle exercise. Sorry there.
No, that's all right. I'm just desperate for somebody to give me a motion or something to deal with.
I feel like, well, from my perspective anyway, that a lot of the, you know, riparian corridor and wetland policies are good. And so if, if we're ready to move on, I think we should just figure out if there's anything additional we want to recommend to the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. Let me, let me make sure. So I'm not positive that Mom or Charles or John or Jim or Susanna are all back now. I just want to, before we sort of move on, at least from this section, I want to make sure that they don't have any thing that they want to add, but Nadia, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I just, so I was just looking at this. So just from a Scribner standpoint, riparian corridors has objective one and wetlands has goal one. Like bolded and big, and I just was wondering why they were different. And I wasn't here for this when we did this part. So if you guys have.
Yeah, I would suspect it's just an error as staff went through the 15 inventories. We probably got confused on our nomenclature because they were drafted by different parts of staff. We all worked on different bits and pieces of goal five.
Okay.
So we can make it objective if nobody objects to the objective.
I'm not seeing objection to that. Thanks, thanks, Nadia. Thank you, George, or for John. I combined your names there somehow. Thank you, John, for noting that you're here and Jim as well. Okay, so I've got a couple of hands, Susanna and Charles. Susanna first?
So I'm on page 115. And I see it come up a fair amount today. So under standard process, it says with directives. And under safe harbor, it says prevent alteration by grading or by placement of structures or impervious surfaces with some exceptions. So I would assume the standard process would also have what's say, what it says under safe harbor as a way to protect wetlands. But if not, I think that wording under safe harbor what I just read should be incorporated into any standard process procedure if wetlands are found. So that's kind of a question about why. Yeah, go ahead.
Gail, do you have feedback on that notion?
Yeah, so with the standard process, that's where you're for, and we're looking specifically at riparian areas on page 115 of the agenda. So there will be slightly different process for wetlands. So focusing just on riparian areas, that would be with the standard process where you would go through your EC review for the economic, the social, the environmental and the energy impacts to a resource. And then based upon that analysis, you would either decide that the resource really doesn't need protection compared to the uses that could go on around it, that the, basically the things that could occur around that resource take precedent over the resource itself. Or you could go the other way and says, say the resource is so valuable that nothing else should be allowed to go around about it because it could impact the resource or you fall somewhere in the middle. And then you would develop your regulations based on the outcome of that EC analysis. Safe Harbor is just this general language that basically says we're not going to allow anything to occur in there, whether it's grading or building something or removing vegetation. But you still have to give the property owner relief, which is why they have the, some exceptions language in there. So both, both would have protections. It's just that standard process would be based upon an analysis of the resource itself and surrounding uses.
Does that make sense?
So the, I mean, for example, yeah, the Nahalum River, I mean, to me, all the riverbank is a riparian area. And really any fish bearing stream going into the Nahalum is a riparian area, correct? And so that would preclude any riverfront property being developed or streams with fish bearing stream development. Is that correct?
Not, not a hundred percent. So if you look at the safe harbor approach for riparian areas. Okay, so for riparian areas, the way the protection zone is established, or whoops, the way the area is established. It will depend on, sorry, I have to scroll down and find my notes. Okay, so depending upon the flow of the stream, there's a certain area that's established. So if it's, for example, 1,000 cubic feet per second, then basically the area 75 feet from the top of each bank on each side of the stream would be considered your riparian corridor. So it doesn't necessarily mean that nothing could ever built there, but it's possible depending upon the size of the parcel. Something could be built there, or it may be the parcel is so small that by the time you put a 75 foot line on the property that there may be no land left to develop. And that's the point where you would have to provide a variance procedure so that we don't just take all value of the property because that gets you into takings issues and lawsuits. Then we have to compensate somebody for their, for the loss of their property.
Gail, as a permutation question to that, so I get that as far as the variance with the safe harbor approach. If you were using the standard review approach and you found something to be a valuable wetland resource or riparian resource. Does the same takings issue exist where, you know, if you said, hey, your property is a valuable riparian buffer and the whole thing is a valuable buffer. Would they still have the same recourse as far as a variance capability within the standard?
It, the OAR, Oregon Administrative Rules don't spell out that requirement for a variance, but you would still be subject to a takings. I would think. I'm not an attorney, but if you have by regulation, taken all use of someone's property, that could be considered a regulatory taking.
Okay. So I, and I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not trying to put you on the legalistic spot here, but I understand that role for you, but I, I'm just trying to get, do you think that they're meaningfully different in the, in the variance slash takings aspect? That are the two approaches, do they have any meaningful difference in that way?
I'm not quite sure if I understand what your question is.
Well, I, I guess the question is, so you've, you've noted on the safe harbor approach that that's an aspect of it, right? That, that we're, we're broad brush applying this criteria to a bunch of lands that might fit it, right? And some of them are going to be excluded or put into a variance process because we, we have a duty not to take all allowable uses of a property from a property owner. And I'm, and I'm just asking that, and so that's sort of presented as a feature of the safe harbor process. But I'm, I'm sort of thinking that's also a feature of the standard approach. We're just not delineating it in this, in the same way. But if we use the standard approach and also said about a property, oh, the whole thing should be protected. That there, they would also have the capability of variance. So I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to get at, are, are they actually meaningfully different in that way? Or are they the same? And you know, that's, that's just a thing that we're going to have in any, in any consideration of a wetland or a riparian corridor. It's always going to have this variance issue because we can't take away all allowable uses.
I, I would agree with that. So if I were to be in this situation with somebody at the counter, in addition to checking what legal counsel, my initial review or reaction would be, well, you would just fall under our general variance procedure, which is usually allowed for any type of standard that we have. So whether it's a setback or a building height, there are a few exceptions. You can't reduce your lot size, but you know, if you wanted to build closer to your, to your property line, that's just the standard variance procedure people would go through. And there are fixed criteria that you have to meet in order to be approved. So that's how I would take it. I don't see anything in OAR that would prohibit us from using a variance procedure if it resulted in a regulatory taking.
Okay, thank you. Let me, so I've got Charles.
Can I say something?
Yeah, Susanna, go ahead.
So I just want another comment. And now on page 114, when they have the safe harbor inventory 50 feet from bank and 75 from bank. I find that sometimes there's not a clear bank. I know my property is defined from the high watermark. I think some of the areas out here might be defined, the property line defined from the midpoint of the river.
I'm not sure.
I think a lot of it is from the high watermark, which I think should be the definition instead of from bank.
Gail, did you catch enough of that?
Yeah, so I think what Susanna is saying, she, on the slides that were part of the Department of Land Conserv- Yeah, so I think what Susanna is saying, she, on the slides that were part of the Department of Land Conservation and Development presentation, it talks about fifty-foot setbacks. And so those setbacks are measured typically from the top of the bank. But I think in what Susanna is saying is that, for example, her property is, her property line falls into the middle of the stream, if I'm understanding correctly.
I think maybe she was saying there's not a clearly defined.
Bank. So I, that's what the language from OAR says. So I, I don't know how you would address that. I'd have to give that some more thought. But it does say, if the top of bank is not clearly defined, there's a different approach that you would use. And I, I don't have that one memorized. I don't know what it would involve. It would be the stand, standard approach, obviously. So you probably could not use safe harbor in that instance, if I'm reading the OAR correctly.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your question, Susanna?
I just want to clarify, my property is.
From the high watermark? And I think.
That that is an acceptable definition because that is indeed. I would just say that some properties may be defined by the midpoint of the river, which is to be more vague because rivers change. The high watermark, when you have the average high water goes down, the degree left behind it really, you can see where it is. And I think that's the definition that should be used.
That we should.
Rather than from bank, though I see that it's a state statute.
Definitions, we should use high watermark.
Which is different than the flood. The water, this is kind of the average high water for not the floodwater stage.
I'm not sure, I got the last one.
Well, the average high watermark, which is the definition of my property, so it is kind of a legal description, I think. Is that when a river is in flood stage, it's well above the high watermark.
So, so I, I guess, Gail, the, the question here, for me anyway, is, so we, we've got the presentation anyway, it's not legal, it's not part of our legal framework, the presentation itself, that, the slide that was referred to. We're getting some of the guidance in that presentation is coming from OAR. Is there, is there any need or ability even for us to delineate these things in a different way than OAR? Or what, whatever would be happening in the standard inventory approach? Yeah, and, and John commented, and I see that comment. I also cannot understand much of what Susanna is saying in terms of the audio quality. I'm taking the best I can of it, but it's fuzzy. But so do we have any ability to alter this, or, or maybe we should actually understand what's in the standard inventory approach before we even really go down that path?
Yeah, so this is the safe harbor approach that is on that slide on page one fourteen. And that's spelled out in Oregon Administrative Rules. So that is what it is. So we're not going to be able to change that. If we want to go with something that's different, then we would want to utilize the standard approach to draft our regulations. But this is the way that safe harbor is measured in OAR.
I think, thank you, Gail. Let's go to Charles and then Chris.
Yeah, so I, I, I just want to chime in on this takings variance issue. So let's go back to the example of a seventy-five foot setback and that means that, given all the other setback rules, the person can't actually build a house. So if the person, the property owner bought his lot with all of those conditions already in existence, then my assumption is that he would not be able to get a variance. Is that correct?
Uh, it would be determined by the hearings officer based on the criteria. So, and I don't have all the criteria memorized off the top of my head. The, the basic bottom line of a variance is, is there something unique about your property that is different from the other properties around you? That if the county applies its rules to your property, you will lose reasonable use of the property. And your hardship can't be an economic hardship. It has to be something associated with the land or the buildings.
Well, I thought there was also a part that, of that that said that hardship also cannot be self-caused. Meaning, you know, you can't, you can't buy a lot that's, that's going to force you to get a variance and then expect the county to give you the variance.
I don't know, the, it's really the hearings officer's decision. You know, obviously, the self-imposed hardship might, I, that's one way of interpreting it. I mean, the, another way of interpreting it is, did this person ask that these regulations be applied to the property? Or did the previous owner ask that these regulations be applied to the property? And so, you know, that's another interpretation of self-imposed hardship. And that's really a question for a hearings officer to decide.
Okay, well, I'm not sure that was satisfying, but okay. So the, the original question I had before that topic came up had to do with, under riparian corridors, there's policy F. And it says the county should use the goal five administrative rule to conduct a ESE analysis. I, I'm not sure what the goal five administrative rule is unless it, unless that goal five administrative rule is in fact the text that describes how ESE analysis is done.
That's correct. That would be all that language from OAR that's in the cover memo.
Okay, thanks.
Chris.
Me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I just had a question about under the heading wetlands on page one nineteen of our packet. There's goal one there, and then there's three bullets below that. And I'm not sure I understand how the bullets might apply there, but they seem a little bit out of place. But more specifically, the, the third one there arrived at net wetlands. What, what does that specifically mean or what's it intended to mean? It's, it's just not clear to me and it, might need a little clarification really, or benefit from clarification.
And I'm not sure if that's in our existing goal five. I'd have to go back and check our notes to see where that originated. But what it appears to be looking at is after you've done your EC analysis, so you've identified your significant wetland, you've looked at all the conflicting uses around it. And you either decide that you're going to protect all of that wetland area, you're going to protect none of it, or you're going to protect some of it. And you may allow some impacts to occur in it. So that would eventually derive your net wetland area.
Okay, I, I get that point, but for the sake of this document, maybe it should be clarified a little bit because maybe it was clear to everybody else, but that statement on its own there left me kind of nonplussed.
Thank you, Chris. Any other comments from the group on the, the policies and goals section? Or policies and objectives section? Suzanne?
I put in chat what I was trying to say. I put in chat what I was trying to say.
Thank you, Susanna. I don't know, I, Gail can certainly speak up if she has additional comment. I think the root of her comment was that, that language that you're addressing was just from OARs and we're not, and we can't alter that any, in any case. If we take the safe harbor approach anyway. So that becomes a choice about whether we take, whether we try to implement safe harbor as opposed to standard. Chris?
I have another two questions of moving to policy B of the wetlands category. I tried to find out what wetland site seven was. I didn't see a site with that designation in the crest report. And I, I wondered, where exactly is that? Is that one of our island habitats out in the Columbia?
No, this is actually out of the Duncan Thomas Report, and it is in the northeast area. And I, if I recall, Cheryl, I think it's down by Blind Slough, Driscoll Slough. I can't remember, Driscoll Slough.
Oh, okay. Well, I can look that up on Google Earth or something, but it, it might be helpful instead of just referring to it as wetland seven, actually, to give it some kind of a place name because, or say, wetland seven out of the Duncan Report or something. Because I, I couldn't figure out exactly where it was. I did see mention a Driscoll Slough, and I didn't have a chance this morning to go back and check exactly where that is. But I think you're right, it's out there in the northeast somewhat. Then I had one more question around policy D. It mentions the Wetlands Advisory Committee. Is that a committee still active?
No, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Other questions or comments about the objectives and policy section? Okay, so I'm not, I'm not seeing hands or anything for, for this section. So let us, if it's okay with the group, let's move to making a recommendation on the question of standard approach versus safe harbor approach or a hybrid thereof. I'd open the floor for either discussions or my preference would be a motion to give direction to the staff on what we would like as a group.
I'm, can you hear me?
Yes, Pat.
I, yes, I move that we direct staff to draft a hybrid language policy.
Okay.
Second.
So we're deafening Pat, I think, step by step, but we've got a motion and a second to direct staff to implement a, or to draft a hybrid policy. Hybrid, I, I'm with the assumption, hybrid between standard approach and safe harbor approach, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we, we have that as a motion. Yes, Gail.
Right, so several questions. Is that for both riparian and for wetlands? Because I, I would prefer that this become a policy that we're putting forward as opposed to just giving some direction to staff and making a separate motion outside of our comp plan process that's going to go to the board. I think that's just cleaner. That's just my personal thought. You can certainly do it however the committee sees fit. But I just need some clarification about where this is going. And then when you say a hybrid approach, are there any parameters to that? So could staff just do one wetland as safe harbor and then, you know, say everything else is standard approach or vice versa? I think I need a little clarity, please.
Thank you, thank you for the questions there, Gail. So Pat, you are the motion maker. Let's start with you. And then I've got a hand from Nadia as well. Chris, do you mind putting your hand down? I think that was previous comment, unless you have current comment too. But let's start with Pat and then Nadia.
My intent was for the policy to be, to use regular or no, safe harbor in the furtherance of the broader goal of maintaining riparian and wetland ecosystem function. And so the intent was for staff, current or future, to be able to use whichever approach was appropriate at the time for the overall goal of increasing, and maintaining at least an increase in the wetland function.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Pat, for the intent there. Nadia?
Um, well, I feel like a lot of this is already in the policies, and I'm a little confused about staff's direction at this point because on page twenty, it was that we were going to review the policies, like kind of the last review and tinkering. We're done. And then three, outside of those policies, which for me feels better, if we're going to, especially if we're going to do specific stuff to provide recommendations regarding policies. I mean, I guess that's regarding policies. I just had envisioned, let's just, you know, this is what the planning commission has been doing, is making like advisory recommendations to the Board of Commissioners that has like more specific. Because I don't want the comp plan to get like all muddled up, and then you get in this place where there'll be a lot of changes at the, in the end from that Board of Commissioners versus trying to keep it simple and clean and broad. And then like all the tiddlywinks get worked out through these recommendations. I don't know. It just, it feels like if we're talking about specifics, like if we're going to say Board of Commissioners, as, as the County Wise Advisory Committee Planning Commission Group, this is what, after doing all this work that we've done, we think that the way the county, the most practical thing for the county to do would be, and then we have like bullet points of these specific things, like we've been talking about, outside of this document that's going to last for ten, twenty years. Am I off base?
Gail, do you have feedback or reaction on, on that?
Sorry, I didn't realize that was directed towards staff, but you, you can do it either way. It, it really doesn't matter. Keep in mind that the, the board is going to have a lot to go through, just going through all the goals and the community plans. And then I'm, I'm just a little concerned about giving them one more set of recommendations, completely divorced from any of the work that they've just reviewed. It says, oh, by the way, on top of everything you just looked at, here's some other things that you should have done or you should do. So, I mean, it's really, there, there's not a correct legal way to do it. You can certainly do whatever the board or your, your group is most comfortable with, but.
So the comp plan wouldn't be like an opportunity to do that, that would be sort of a parallel effort. So this isn't the opportunity to sort of take advantage of updating it, but that, you're suggesting that it would be sort of extra work in the already difficult process of getting the comp plan.
Well, here, here's what I had in my head that probably didn't translate from the head to the fingers, to the keyboard, to the paper. Is that we're, we're writing a document that's going to cover the next twenty years in theory. We know that for forty years, the county hasn't done any work on identifying riparian areas or updating its wetland inventories or anything like that. I think what I was hoping would come out of the recommendations today is that there would be specific recommendations in these two policy areas and goal five that would recognize first of all that, you know, we, we haven't done any work over the past forty years. And then say, okay, we, we didn't do anything for forty years, but now in the next twenty years, here's what the county, we recommend the county should do. So the county should, like you had with your crest report, we should finalize that, get that updated, send it off to DSL. Because we've never touched riparian corridors, you know, we, we, you know, the county should maybe begin with a, whatever approach you want to pick, you know, a safe harbor approach, maybe for, you know, the larger river areas or something that's clearly defined, and then, or maybe for the small streams, and then say utilize a standard approach for, you know, river areas that are identified. I'm making things up off the top of my head here, so. But I was hoping that we would have something a little bit more specific that was actually in the comp plan that we would have to use as a basis for something. Because the comp plan will get adopted. The recommendations you make independent of a comp plan that will go to the commission, they can choose to act on it, they could choose to not act on it, but there's no formal adoption to it unless the board gives staff direction to say, okay, we like that recommendation, that makes sense, staff move forward on it. Does that make sense? Because I think it has a little more teeth being in the comp plan, but I want you as the committee to do what you're comfortable with. And if the consensus is it should be a separate set of recommendations to the board, that's fine. It's not a violation of any rule or anything. That was just the thinking that I had in my head when I was trying to write the cover memo.
Thanks, Gail. Okay, so we've got a variety of hands up. I've got Chris, and then Charles, and then Jan.
Okay, that was very helpful, Director Henrickson, and that's kind of what I was thinking was intended here, and so the main points on that are that we can very concisely construct something in a matter of a few policies and insert it into this big document that will in some form be adopted by the county commissioners. So putting it in some other place is, is not a good idea. We, we need to have those, those concepts of what we want to do in terms of standard or safe harbor approach or something in between. It, it needs to be in a policy here if, if we want it to really take effect. And we need to take up the issue of riparian stuff having been ignored in the past, not, maybe not intentionally, but that's the way it was. So I'm in favor of trying to take the beginnings of a policy that Patrick came up with a short time ago and try to maybe refine it or solidify it a little bit and stick it in here, but it's probably going to take a couple of policy statements, I think. So that's my thinking on it.
Thank you, Chris. Charles?
Yeah, I'm confused by the policy I, the way it's written, because to me, it doesn't really say anything. It says, to me, it says we should use either the standard approach or the safe harbor approach. And, and I'm not sure that's, that was the objective. I, I thought the objective was to say one or the other, or perhaps to say the default position would be to start with the safe harbor approach, and, you know, if, if the findings, you know, suggest that this is a truly significant you know, wetland, then perhaps the ESEE approach would be utilized, but to say use either or both, I'm not sure is any help.
Good. Thank, thank you, Charles. I'm not taking that as a motion at the moment, but if you want to make, do that in the form of a motion to suggest wording, I'm totally fine with that, too. I was taking that as discussion, though.
Because we're still in discussion on my motion, right?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. We, we do have a motion on the floor for Policy I. So I'm, I'm just saying I'm not taking that as a motion to amend yet, unless Charles.
The other thing is for us to quick vote no on it and start fresh. I'm fine with that. I'm prepared to do that.
We can do that, too. I'll, I'll go through discussion for Jan, and then if, if if we get to a vote and there's objection, we'll just jettison this one. So Jan?
I'm not sure this is helpful, but you know, what we really want to say, I think, is what our intent is, and and probably it is protection of clean water and fish-bearing streams and wetlands because of all the things they do. And I don't have it printed out to know if that's in the introduction, but you know, the and I, and I also don't know whether it's better to tell this board what our intent is or not, to be honest. But, you know, we need to say, these are the reasons that it's important to move ahead. This was not done in the past. It is crucial to our future. This is what needs to be done.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
I just threw something in the chat, just, just as a beginning point for discussion to try to coalesce our thoughts. And it would read, the county should adopt a hybrid approach for both wetlands and riparian, probably corridors. The hybrid approach should contain these elements, and these would be bullets. The hybrid approach be within a logical framework. In other words, it's just, just don't say a hybrid approach. It has to have some kind of a pathway, really a plan. A second, the default should be a safe harbor approach, but the standard approach to be used as time and money becomes available, knowing that an EC is, is quite expensive, especially that aspect of, of the, the standard approach. Now, now, my, my idea is we can tear this apart, throw it out, add to it, tweak it, just to have, see if we can come together on, on some logic to what we're proposing, or actually it'll be a policy within Goal 5.
So Jim, I think that we could probably do a couple of approaches with what you put in there. One is that we could replace Pat's language with that via amendment, or we could vote down, we could go ahead and have a vote on Pat's policy I, and then come back to this if it fails. Are you comfortable with the latter approach, Jim, or do you want to make this an amendment to Pat's motion that's on the table? Oh, you mute, you remuted, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. That, that would be fine.
Okay, so let's, let's go to a vote on, on Pat's motion, which is represented by the policy I that's highlighted on the screen now. I'll read that for everyone. But this is to insert a policy I, and, and this is, to be clear, this is in the riparian section, correct, Gail? I just want to make sure that that's the.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. So in the riparian corridor section, policy I, this motion would be to insert policy I, the county should utilize both the standard and/or safe harbor approaches when identifying significant riparian areas. So if you would like to insert this, let's do a voice vote here. If you would like to insert this policy I, please signify now by saying yes.
Yes.
Okay, and then if you would not like to insert this policy I, please signify by saying no.
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 Okay, I believe the noes have it, so that motion fails. Jim, you've got something to bring up that you've put in chat. Do you want me to just take that as a motion? And then we can change language if needed via amendment. Okay.
Yes, that, that is the intent, is I have a feeling, I know we have wetlands and riparian corridors separate. I think in terms of this approach, they're, they're really parallel. We could duplicate that if we want. But the idea is that you make a broad statement, and then you have certain elements that go with that, and that, those are just two that I threw up. I did not have crest in here on purpose, because we can talk about this. You know, it's, we have other policies that said about adopting crest. I don't know if we want to take that next step and say the first step in wetlands would be adopting the, the crest or whatever.
Okay, so, and, and to be clear, this, this would be a policy, it's I, it's in riparian corridors right now, but maybe that it would be duplicated in both riparian and wetland? Is that your?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay, so, so let's consider this policy I. We've got a motion, it's, it is on the screen right now. Let me just check. Is there a second before I read it off? Jan, put her hand up. Could you go audible for us?
I second it.
Okay, thank you, Jan. So we've got a motion and a second to insert this policy I, which would read the county should adopt a hybrid approach for both, both wetlands and riparian. I think, Jim, you wanted riparian corridors. Is that correct? Okay, for both wetlands and riparian corridors, the hybrid approach should contain these elements. The hybrid approach be within a logical framework, and the default should be a safe harbor approach with the standard approach to be used as time and money become available. I replace that with become, but yeah. Okay, discussion on this, this moved policy I. Let's start with Chris.
Okay, I have two comments about that. Overall, I, you know, I'm, I'm for this policy in general, but I do think that it should here, rather than say both wetlands and riparian corridors, since we have our, our policies divided into the two parts, or the two areas, that this should just refer to the riparian corridors, and then we'll need a parallel one for the wetlands. Otherwise, it doesn't make sense with the logic of the way these policies are laid out. So that's one comment. The other is, I'm unclear exactly what a logical framework is. Probably by the way I've been talking this morning, you can see the trouble I'm having with logic, but you know, what is that? Maybe we could flush that out just a little bit.
Okay.
So I can just add a little bit. My, my thinking is like, if we just leave it as such, both a hybrid approach without, without anything attached to it, that seems to me that not all watersheds are created equal, or not, not all wetlands are created equal, and so you would want to have some kind of a, an arrangement of structure for the timing of when you apply the, the standard approach. Exactly what that would be, I don't know. But I logically, I think that there is some logic, a, an approach for wetlands. Well, in this case, we're talking about riparians, riparians that would make more sense to where you would do standard approach, and others you would just leave it alone and use to save harbor for the time being. Now, that's the intent. The wording, well, it's whatever we want it to be.
Well, if I could just follow up on that, just, just to, to make it clear what I was getting at, I, I understand your point, and I guess the way I'm looking at the two methods, the standard versus the safe harbor, is that the safe harbor we throw out to, you know, lasso everything in and protect it initially. And I thought that the standard approach then would come about when somebody brings up an issue of it's preventing me from doing that, or it's allowing something to happen to this wetland that, that's, is too important to let that happen. So we need to go the next step and get down to the nitty gritty on what the characteristics of this wetland are that you would get to using a standard approach. So I see it definitely as kind of a an incremental improvement on the safe harbor, and that it would be brought about by some, some particular event in land development or some change in the environment that, that brings it to the attention of some person or some organization to take it to the next level of understanding about that, that riparian corridor.
Thank you, Chris. Let me, so Cheryl, I, I, I would do want to recognize you. I, I would like to, there were a couple of things that came up in this that I'd like to try to resolve before we move on with discussion. The first is, Chris, you made the point about this containing language for both wetlands and riparian corridors. While this is in the riparian corridor section, there is a following wetland section. The motion was to put this language in both. Is there, as a, as just a Scrivener's change, is there any objection from the group to the language in the wetlands section only saying wetlands, and the language in the riparian corridor section only saying riparian corridors? Is there objection to, to splitting them so that the language is specific to the section they're in? I, I, I think that's reasonable as a Scrivener's change. I don't, I don't think that's meaningfully changing them, but okay, thank you for, for that suggestion, Chris. Jim, I, I think I understand what you're saying as far as logical framework. I I might concur with the concern that logical in this is open to, to interpretation in some ways, as whether or not people think something is logical or not. I, I might suggest language like criteria-based framework just to, if someone wants to move that, just so that it shows that the county would set up some criteria through policy, not to be contained here, but that that would be what it's based on rather than just logic. Okay, if someone wants to move that, that's great. I can't make a motion. But, but before we go to that, Cheryl, you have had your hand up for a bit.
I was just going to suggest that, that we separate the riparian and wetland, and we already did that nicely. I am ready to make a motion that we use the word criteria-based rather than whatever it is logical. And I would remind us that it's after 2:00 on our agenda. At 2:30, we move to public comment, and we're all done.
Thank, thank you, Cheryl. So we've got a motion to replace logical framework with criteria-based framework. Is there a second for that motion?
I second it.
Good, thank you, Jim. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Patrick?
I guess only to say, and I'm sorry, Cheryl, but I put into chat language of possibly another motion that you might have.
Pat, let's, let's dispose of this amend, language amendment, and then we come back to that and see if the, the group wants to take that up. Okay, so any further discussion on the replacement of logical with criteria-based? Okay, any objection to the change from logical to criteria-based? Susanna?
Well, I still find it kind of vague, while I think, I would like to say that Pat's definition, I think, is, is clearer and more to the point. So I would say no to the logical framework wording and yes to Pat's wording.
So, so just to be clear, just to be clear, this motion is to replace logical with the phrase criteria-based. Just, just be clear on what the present motion is.
I'm sorry, yes, yes, right.
Okay, and then Patrick, you had your hand up?
Just to say, I, I think criteria-based is an improvement over logical, but I think unless we spell out what that is, it's still like Susanna's suggesting, kind of nothing there, that unless we just, I think, describe what that criteria is within that logical framework.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Charles, were you wanting to make comment?
No, thank you.
Okay, well, then let's go to a vote on this one. So again, this is just a language amendment to replace the phrase logical framework with the phrase criteria-based framework. So it would be the hybrid approach. Um, so it would be the hybrid approach be within a criteria-based framework. Is there any objection to that change? Okay, hearing no objection, uh, that motion carries. Um, uh, so we'll go back to discussion of the main motion, which is policy I. Um, I, I do want to, Pat, I want to give you the opportunity, if you would like, uh, to offer your, what I would take as substitute language, uh, for the whole policy. You could do that at this time.
All right, I'll give it a go. I move that the language be, the, as in the chat, the county should adopt an approach to maintaining riparian corridors that employs both the standard approach and safe harbor approach, whichever better maintains the benefits and functions of the corridor.
Okay, uh, and that would, and to be clear, Pat, you're meaning for that to replace the entirety of policy I, correct?
Correct. And in discussion, I could talk more about that.
Okay, uh, so is there a second for that motion to replace, uh, the previous policy I with the?
I second it.
Okay, uh, so we've got a motion and a second to replace. Uh, and, uh, just for clarity's sake, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read these two. Um, even though hopefully most people can see them, but so we've got policy I that exists right now, which reads the pu- uh, or e- exists as a motion anyway. Uh, the county should adopt a hybrid approach for riparian corridors. The hybrid approach should contain these elements. The hybrid approach be within a criteria-based framework. And the default should be a safe harbor approach with the standard approach to be used as time and money become available. That language in its entirety to be replaced by the county should adopt an approach to maintaining riparian corridors that employs both the standard approach and safe harbor approach, whichever better maintains the benefits and functions of the corridor. Okay, uh, we have a second for that discussion. Chris?
Y- you know, I, I don't have a real problem with, with, uh, Pat's idea, except to me, it's not as clear what, what you mean, uh, you can't have both in one area. So to me, it would be rather than both, it would be either the standard or the, um, safe harbor, whichever is likely to benefit the functions of the corridor, uh, s- some wording like that. I, I guess I could see that, but I really don't see how it does it, the, the part it leaves out, what I like about the, the one that we just voted on is, is the last, um, bullet there, the default should be safe harbor approach with the standard approach to be used as time and money become available. That's, that's how I'm looking at this whole process, that the safe harder harbor is an expediency move to cover things, but then as you as, as development occurs or, or something changes, you, you, you have the possibility then of getting more detailed with the standard uh, analysis process. And, and so I, I really have to favor policy I as it's shown there on the screen a little bit over, uh, the one that, that Pat has put out there, which is also very good, but anyway.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Um, Pat, you have your end up?
Yeah, no, Chris, that's excellent. Um, and I think what my, what I was thinking of with my language was the purpose for employing either is to maintain function and benefits of the ecosystem. So the goal is the important part of my sentence. I like your part about being more specific in the ways that it is. So I could see a new motion that would kind of keep the intent of whatever the thing is, either this or that for the purpose of the corridor. So there might be a, a nice mashup there somewhere.
Okay, uh, other discussion on this replacement language? Jim?
Maybe we could include the salient points of, of, uh, what Patrick has mentioned as one of the criteria. You know, as, as one of the, you know, one of the, the cri- one of the bullet points. Like as a consideration to, to better maintain the benefit and function of the corridor, you know, uh, yeah, the riparian corridor. So that's really, that, that could be one of the criteria really based within a, uh, within a criteria-based framework.
So, so I don't, I, I'm, I'm hesitant to devolve too much into, uh, to all, all of the wordsmithing permutations we might come up with. What I, what I might suggest here, uh, so, so I think the salient point that I'm hearing from Pat uh, and through this motion is that there's a desire here to have this, uh, better maintain the benefits and functions of the corridor idea included in the decision-making process that w- we use whatever process is better for that. I think that there's also a desire that I'm hearing that we keep something like this default, uh, maybe sa- safe harbor into standard if it's more appropriate. I think that you could include that, that language, that better fit language in the second bullet point of the original policy I. In that you could say the default should be safe harbor approach. And, uh, when the standard approach would, uh, might result in better main maintenance of benefits and functions of the corridor, it be used as time and money al- allow, uh, you know, that, that sort of, uh, um, approach to trying to include both could be possible. Uh, just as a thought here. Um, as opposed to it being part of the criteria set, just making it part of the decision-making to go to a different system. Yeah, uh, Jan, you have a hand up?
I think we're getting too much into weeds when we have to develop the criteria ourselves to. I think we've got to trust that future staff are going to care about the environment and use what knowledge they have and are going to um, be able to work out criteria that function. And we, we don't need to wordsmith at this point.
Okay, um, any, any further discussion on the motion by Pat, uh, for this replacement language? Okay, uh, and then let's, let's, let's go to a vote on this language, Pat. I you keep, uh, putting new permutations up. For the moment, though, uh, let's have a vote on the, the replacement language on screen, uh, which again, this is a replacement of the policy I that Jim had, uh, submitted with the language, the county should adopt an approach to maintaining riparian corridors that employs both the standard approach and safe harbor approach, whichever better maintains the benefits and functions of the corridor. Okay, uh, so let's have a vote on that. Uh, I'm, my suspicion is there might be some dissension here. Uh, so let's do, uh, all those in favor of replacing the original text, uh, with this text, please signify by saying yes.
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 Okay, uh, any who oppose the replacement of this text, please signify by saying no.
No.
Uh, that's pretty close, uh, so let's have a vote. Um, okay. I'll, I'll just go around the room and ask for a vote yes or no and try to keep count here. Uh, Cheryl, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Pat, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Chris, how do you vote on the motion?
Nay.
Jim, how do you vote on the motion?
No.
Jan, how do you vote on the motion? I think that was yes, but could you come off mute and say it?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Clark, how do you vote?
No.
Okay, Long, how do you vote? I think that was a no. Could you speak up just a little bit, Long?
No.
Thank you. Yes, got that one. Uh, Nadia, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Charles, how do you vote on the motion?
No.
Susanna, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Wow, okay, uh, I've got to count of five to five. This might be a first. I don't know if I've ever had to submit a tie-breaking vote. Um, I'm gonna vote no. So, uh, the motion fails. So we're back to the original language for policy I. Okay, uh, any further discussion or amendments to this language? That's kind of thrilling. My heart's beating because I got to make a vote. Any other discussion on the language on screen? Jim? Oh, and you're muted, Jim, if you are talking. Maybe Jim has lost the mute button for the moment.
Oh, I didn't, actually, what I did is I lost the cursor, it just wouldn't work, so I couldn't unmute. Uh, I, I think, uh, we should look at trying to incorporate what, uh, what Patrick had mentioned, has, has written about, uh, the benefits and functions of the corridor into say what, uh, you know, what Andy had said a little earlier, this, because I like the concept. I don't, I don't want to lose that.
Okay.
And, and so if we can incorporate that, the default should be a safe harbor approach, uh, with a standard approach to be used uh, for the benefit and function of the corridor as time and money becomes available. Might be a little crude, but the idea is to get that key phrase benefits and functions of the corridor. And then the only really tweak to this is that is explicitly saying that that would apply if you want to go to a standard approach away from the safe harbor approach as compared to, um, Patrick's original proposal. It would be one or the other, just based on that to, to make that decision.
I just put into chat, um, one that says the county should adopt an approach to maintain your fear for that employs a safe harbor approach unless the standard approach better maintains the benefits and functions of the corridor that might address.
Jim, do, Jim, is that, uh, does that sufficiently address yours? If, if I take that as a motion from Pat, he did have it in the chat for a little bit.
Yes, that, that's, that's good.
And so, and so Pat, is that to replace the second bullet? Is, am I understanding that correctly?
Honestly, I was focusing on writing the words more than where it goes, so I'll defer to you for that. Uh, it was in response to the Chris's to have the, uh, sa- har- safe harbor default unless that.
I maintains the benefits and functions of the quarter. Can I add, uh, as time and money become available to the end of this passage, just so that we capture that? So, uh, so I'm gonna take as a motion, uh, from Pat that we replace the front piece of bullet number two, which, uh, w- we would replace the language, the default should be a safe harbor approach with the standard approach to be used. We replace that with the language, the county should adopt an approach to maintaining ri- riparian corridors to, uh, employ the safe harbor approach unless the standard approach better maintains the benefits and functions of the corridor as time and money become available, comma, as time and money become available. Does that make sense, Pat, as a, as an encapsulation of your motion?
It does. I would put as time and money becomes available at the very beginning and at the end, but other than that, as time and money becomes available, the county should adopt an approach.
I think safe harbor is not dependent on, uh, time and money.
Nevermind. Retract.
Okay, um, so, so we've got a motion on the floor to amend language. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to sort of speed us through this because, uh, I know we are time limited today. So we've got a motion on the floor to amend the, the front speech language of bullet number two. That bullet, uh, would then read, the county should adopt an approach to maintaining riparian corridors that are pro- that employs the safe harbor approach unless the standard approach better maintains the benefits and functions of the corridor, comma, as time and money become available. Is there a second for that, for the motion, uh, to replace that language?
I second it.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Is there a discussion on this language change?
Only semantics?
Yeah.
Um, the county should adopt an approach as time and money allow to maintain and repair corridors to be a friendly man if you're coming in.
Yeah.
After approach as time and money allow. But that, we're wordsmithing close to the public hearing hour, so maybe for distinction about.
I think we've got, we've got head shakes, so, and I don't want us to devolve into, um, to just argue an overplacement of that. I will trust staff to make this, um, readable a- as it goes forward and logical, so, um, let's, let's consider the language, uh, as we've got on the screen. I know Gail is, uh, moving things around to, to best represent the motion. Any other discussion of this wording though, before we try to go to, to vote on it? So I'm, I'm gonna ask if there's objection, and this is just objection to this language change on the second bullet. This is not for the whole thing. Uh, is there any objection to that language change on the bullet, uh, to, uh, replace the default language? Jan, you have a d- objection?
I think m- moving the as time and money allows up weakens the statement. I should think it should be at the end.
I would retract my, uh, change to put it to the front then on that persuasive comment.
Okay, um, so let's, so I, I wasn't aware, uh, let, let's consider it with the as time and money, uh, statement at the end of this, of the statement. Is there any objection to the statement? Uh, with the time and money bit at the, at the end? Any objection? Okay, uh, so, thank you. That, that change is accepted. Thanks, Pat, for, um, and I, um, okay. Um, so let's, let's consider, we're back to the main motion, which is the insertion of this policy I uh, for the riparian corridor section. Uh, is there any further discussion on the policy as a whole?
I should be.
Okay, uh, let me check. Is there any objection to the insertion of this policy I that we've worked through? Any objection to including it, uh, in the riparian corridor section? Okay, I, I don't hear any objections, so I believe that the, uh, newly crafted policy I is accepted by the group. Uh, let me just, just check, uh, to make sure. So that would be, I think, policy P right now. Um, within the next section, policy P for wetlands, uh, with just the changes to, uh, from riparian corridor to wetland, uh, in the language. Um, let me, uh, we already sort of had that as part of the motion to begin with, but let me just check with the group. Is there any objection uh, to including this as policy P under the wetlands policies and objectives uh, with the, uh, language changes just to adapt it for wetlands? Any objection to that? Okay. So any other discussion points, motions, uh, for the riparian corridors or the wetlands section here? Or alternatively, someone could make a motion, uh, to close out discussion of goal five. Nadia?
I just want to make sure that, um, staff has what they need to make a recommendation, like, is this clear enough? Or do you need more detail?
I think the, the one thing I would have a question about is the criteria-based framework. Yeah, I think that would be my main question.
Would not the land use decision-making kind of constitute that mod, that framework? As the applications come forward? Yeah, I, I'm confused on that too, whether it needs to be explicit here or I'm not sure to the person.
So, is the intent that somebody in the county creates a checklist that says if you meet four out of five criteria, you have to utilize a standard approach? I, I'm not quite sure what we're getting at when we say a hybrid approach within a criteria-based framework.
Jim? And then Pat?
Well, I, I can, I can say what my intent was. I was looking at it more holistically. It's like you have a whole county. And if the county wishes to move in a direction of a standard approach, where do you begin? What wetlands are in this case? What wetlands do you begin with? What part of the county do you begin with? That's the kind of criteria that I was thinking of. In my mind, especially for wetlands, for wetlands, it would be, uh, the wetlands included in the crest report. To me, that's a no-brainer, but I don't know if we should be so explicit. That's, that's what I, that's what the intent was. Does that help, Gail, at all?
Um, it helps a bit, Jim. We did address the, uh, crest report in our previous policy O up here. So we have taken care of that one. Chair Gardner had put a comment in, or some suggested wording that I thought was kind of was good, um, that basically said within two years, the county should explore the standard and safe Harvard approaches to determine best procedure to identify and protect significant riparian areas and pursue the process. Which, I mean, because I think there's gonna have to be a lot more discussion maybe about this, but I think her, her comment or suggested wording kind of captures the fact that, that we need to have that conversation. And then I had something else I wanted to add to it, but I can't remember what it was now, so. But anyway, I'm just wanted to bring her comment to everyone's attention as well.
My suggestion was actually your language, so it was just directly from your, um, language, but I just added a timeframe to it. But then this other train had left the station, so.
Is there a desire from, uh, Nadia or any of the rest of the group to, to try and change that language now?
I don't think so. I think I hate that phrase, beating a dead horse, but, um, we're getting to that place, I think, in the day. Um, I think, I think that's the, like, what I, what she wrote and I adapted is pretty much kind of the intent of the committee. It's just the way they, it just got written a little differently. It's just that there's more work to be done to decide where, um, where each approach is appropriate, and I think everybody understands that, and hopefully the Board of Commissioners will understand that too.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna take Gail, and then we'll see if Pat and Jim still have comment.
Okay, so going back to the motion then, that's on the floor, what I would suggest is we don't call it a hybrid approach, because it, I think, first of all, I think that terminology might be confusing. Because what we're ultimately, or what you would ultimately be recommending is what's in that second bullet point is that you're gonna adopt a safe harbor approach to begin with. And then, I think maybe you've got the language in here that says unless it better maintains and things. So I think you've covered both of that, and I think if you took out that first bullet point and the, and the beginning frontispiece, where it talks about the hybrid approach, I think that would be much cleaner.
Um, Pat, you have a hand?
Yes, I think as I interpreted what Jim's comment was, the, the, the hybrid approach, the logical approach, criteria-based framework would be approaching the decision of what you use as the application on the ground, kind of overarching. I think, uh, rather than a hybrid approach on the ground making decisions. So to me, that, the hybrid approach or a criteria-based, I'll stop talking now, but I think that was my message. So I think Jim's, uh, sense of that criteria-based framework supersedes the decision on what approaches you to maintain corridors or.
Okay, thanks, Pat. Gail, did you have follow-up or response to that?
Yeah, so going back, I'm talking about the hybrid approach. We, I think what we're, you want to say is that the county needs to develop basically a checklist to determine whether the hybrid or the hybrid, the standard approach or the safe harbor approach should be used when, developing protections for significant wetlands. But that doesn't I don't know where I'm going with that, so I'm gonna shut up, pulling a Chris.
But it doesn't give direction, I think, like, so what? And I think the direction then is that feeds about whatever one maintains the benefits and functions of the weapon.
Yeah, um, Chris, I don't, I don't want to cut you off, but I, but I do want to, uh, I want to limit us on just noodling around on, on what to do with this particular, uh, passage, especially because we do have a public comment and, and wrapping up things. So, Chris, um, I'll recognize you, but I just want to be conscious of, we got a few other.
This is real short. It's just, uh, it's a question, really. I, I hope that what we have there in a policy has this meaning to everybody that's reading it, that we start with a safe harbor. We can go to the standard as needed, but it isn't blanket. It isn't like we take and throw away the safe harbor at some point and then do the standard for every wetland or every riparian corridor. I'm seeing it as individually selected for that, maybe that particular wetland, or maybe for a watershed, all the wetlands in a watershed or, or some logical geographical area. Is, is that how other people see this? Because I think that's the idea. You put out the blanket approach, then as a need arises, you may have to do a, a more refined delineation of the, of the resource.
That's my shared understanding.
Yes, that's my understanding too. Okay, thank you, Chris, for, for getting us, um, to clarify that. Okay, let me ask if we can, uh, if we can get a motion to close up discussion for goal five. Anybody want to make that motion? Or we could just stay in committee.
Well, it sounds, you know, Andy, it sounds like everybody doesn't want to end goal five, and so we're trying to drag it out even longer. But in spite of that, I will make a motion to, uh, close out goal five.
And I will second it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to close out discussion of goal five. Any discussion on that? Any objection to it? Okay, uh, well, without objection, we can close out our discussion of goal five, which means that we can move to public comment. While we don't really have members of the public, uh, on at this point, to my knowledge, uh, Gail?
All right, now I'm confused, uh, so what, what happened with our final vote on, on this language?
We had no objection to that policy.
All right, thank you.
Um, so at this time, we can take public comment. If, if anyone from the public wishes to speak on these proceedings, we would ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone from the public want to make a comment? Hearing none, uh, then let's move to scheduling, meeting schedules and time. Gail, do you have materials for us on? What's our next, what's our next step?
Nothing. Nothing. You get a little vacation for the time being. We have sent and will be sending goals, obviously, to Department of Land Conservation and Development. They're also out for legal review with our legal counsel. We're still hoping that we're on target for final adoption in July of the goals that you've reviewed so far. Goals sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, uh, are on hold for the immediate time being. We have requested one hundred and fifty thousand in our next, in our upcoming fiscal year, which would begin July first for, uh, to hire consultants to do the work on goals sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, because there are a lot more technical issues associated with them. It's the estuarine resources, the coastal shorelands, and the beaches and dunes. Those are the three goals. So we're waiting to see if that gets approved, and then after that is approved, uh, we would put out a request for, uh, qualifications or quest for proposals for consultants to come in and do that work. And then, uh, at some point, you, it may be possible that this committee will be reconstituted, not reconstituted, but re, re-energized, reenacted. There's a word I'm looking for, but, um, and then we'll move forward on sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, but for the foreseeable future, this is our last meeting. So I do want to say thank you to everyone for all your time and all your effort and all your patience with me. So, and even though I may have appeared cranky at times, um, I've actually learned a lot listening to all of you. So it's been a very good experience for me, and just going through this process itself, it's been educational for me, and I think for staff, because none of us, uh, had really dug into the comp plan. A lot of us were new to the state and to the statewide planning process, so it's been a real learning experience for us as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Susanna, I see you've got a handle.
Hi, thank you, Gail. So my question is about the Jewel School community meeting. How is that getting advertised? Are there any little poster-y things that I could put up at the store? And Jewel School, or Jewel School, I imagine Jewel School may have some way of announcing it.
Yeah.
And I'll, go ahead.
Okay, I wanted to say, first of all, thank you, Susanna, for reminding me of that. Uh, we have contracted with Oregon's Kitchen Table. They are an organization out of PSU, and they handled our redistricting that recently was finalized here in the county. They are gonna be holding three outreach events. One will be at the Jewel School on June second at 6:00 PM. One will be at the Napa High School on May nineteenth at 6:00 PM. And then there will be a virtual-only event on June fourteenth at 6:30 PM. And in the meantime, some, beginning sometime in the middle of May, there will be uh, an online and paper survey that's available in both English and Spanish that will be basically trying to get at, uh, the public input mainly around five areas, uh, citizen involvement, housing, urbanization, economic, sustainable economic development, and factors that people feel are hindering, uh, growth and development in the county. And those areas of interest came from a board at a work session on April twentieth. We are gonna advertise that, uh, it's already out with press releases. I think there was a little piece in The Historian. Uh, there's, uh, in our weekly update that goes out to all the news agencies, it's in there. There is a website up that's hosted by Oregon's Kitchen Table that's available, and we are sending out a postcard to all of the, um, unincorporated property owners within Cl辛 County, so, and that will be going out on or before May fifth. And I think that's all we're doing at this point.
Thank you, Gail, and, um, and Nadia did put the times and places in the chat as well. Thanks, Nadia. Jim?
Well, first of all, I'd like to, uh, thank, uh, I'd like to thank Gail and her staff for bearing with us, and it took a while for us to finally, uh, come together in a format that was most productive, at least for us. Unfortunately, it was more work for the staff, but I do think, uh, the, the result was like, uh, was that we finally went through all of the goals in a more timely manner. So appreciate that for, for all of the, the planning department people. Also, I'd like to thank Andy for being an excellent cheer, trying to, uh, control, uh, the herd of cats as we are, and appreciate that immensely. And, and I, I like Jan's suggestion about a dinner, so if, please, uh, send a little note or somehow Jen could contact us. You mentioned that you volunteered to, to find a place, and I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Gail, on that front, is it possible for you to share the, the email mailing list with Jan? I know it's changed a little bit over time, but, but for that purpose, is any objection from the group with uh, giving emails to Jan so that we can coordinate a, a little get-together?
I don't use Twitter, so I won't, I won't post them on Twitter.
Thank you. All right. Thank, thank you, Jan, for volunteering to coordinate that. Okay, uh, any other comments, questions, things from the group before we close up today? Cheryl?
I'm probably the, uh, last one standing who, uh, started this process forty years ago. And one of the reasons that I was interested in doing this was because I did get to participate when we did the first one. Robert Strickland also participated in the first one. This process was very different than it was the first time around, um, but it, we evolved. I, I, I would echo what Jim said, that we evolved into a, a process that, that became efficient and focused. And I am very, very grateful for all of the people who served on this. There are a number of people here who have expertise, most of the people here have expertise beyond mine, but there are people here who have expertise in areas that were very, very useful to us. Today, I found myself wishing, on one of multiple times, that I do wish that we had had someone, um, from Fish and Wildlife with us a lot of times. And hopefully, when we're working on goals sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, um, we might be able to somehow include the expertise from the Fish and Wildlife folks. But, um, thank you, Gail, for your patience with us through all these many hours, months, weeks, and years, and, um, and I'm, I'm proud of what we have accomplished.
Thank you, Cheryl. Pat?
What they said, uh, well spoken, and to the members of the Planning Commission, thank you for letting me come in and indulge myself in that kind of your form, and good luck with the rest of the Planning Commission activities moving forward. I'll be a keen observer.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, um, Jan?
I just, um, would like to say thank you to Gail because I, uh, having been in her shoes at one point, I understand the push and pull she has received and, um, and the frustration at times in dealing with a bunch of us who want to, to get the perfect word, no matter how long it takes. And, um, I think this has been an, an amazing group of capable, intelligent, and and, uh, dedicated people, and, um, I wish that, I hope that the, the work is understood in that light, and I have a feeling, since a lot of the stuff we've dug into is not even going to be discussed, maybe some of it, it will survive, uh, through the process, and, um, but I, I really appreciate working with you all. I don't like long Zoom meetings, like, I'm sure none of you do, but, but if you're gonna do it, you couldn't have a better group of people to do it with.
Thanks, Jan. Any other comments from the group before we close up? Well, for my part, I'll just, uh, I'll thank you all. It's been, uh, amazing opportunity for me to, to be chair for both this joint group and for the Citizen Advisory Committee, countywide group, uh, so thank you for that. I'm appreciative of that, especially because I feel like I'm the least subject matter expert among you. Uh, so you gave me the opportunity to play, uh, important. Uh, so you gave me the opportunity to play a important role even without that and, uh, contribute to this group in a meaningful way. I am, uh, grateful to staff for all the input you guys gave us and, and Gail especially. I know that this was not an easy process the whole time. So thank you for sticking it out and giving us great material to work with. Um, I think ultimately, the best thing about this is every draft section we've got is a huge improvement over the existing material that we came in uh, to this process with. And I think that even if nothing changes going forward, uh, from the material that we've got, this comp plan is a huge upgrade on the comp plan that we had beforehand, uh, mostly in terms of accessibility for the public and workability for staff in the future. I think this is tremendous work. So thank you all for being a part of it. I hope to see you all, uh, in the near future as Jan will get us together. I look forward to sharing a beer or a meal or, or whatever venue we can with each other in physical proximity. Uh, this Zoom process for the last couple of years has been difficult. Uh, it'll be good to shake hands and hug and just laugh over things in, in close proximity. Thank you all. Uh, if, if there's no other comments, let's be adjourned and be thankful for this process.